Let's test.
Okay.
Now we're tested.
Yeah, now we're live, yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the reorganization meeting of the Planning Board for the Borough of Highland Park to order. The Statement of the Open Public Meetings Act in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been provided by filing a copy thereof on the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Highland Park Mirror, and the Highland Park Monitor on January the 3rd, 2013, and by posting a copy thereof on the Borough of Highland Park website and the bulletin board on the main floor of the Borough Hall at this location. Fire exits are on to the left and to the right of the council chambers. Please speak into the microphones. With that, Diane, if you'd be good enough to do a roll call, please.
Sure.
Kim Hammond.
Here.
Nate Siegel.
Here.
Lita Greenberg. Alan Clugger.
Here.
Paul Lanaris.
Okay, I'll talk to you later, sorry.
Terry Hovere.
Here.
Alan Williams.
Here.
Patrick Malley.
Here.
Heather Wilkerson.
Here.
Scott Luthman. And Alan Shechtel, Bruce Koch, and Mr. Thomas are present.
Thank you. This is the reorganization meeting, so we'll go to that. The first order of business is for nominations for the chair. Is there a nomination for the chair for the Planning Board for 2013?
I'll nominate Kim Hammond.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Clugger.
Yes.
Ms. Hovere.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Malley.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkerson.
Yes.
Congratulations, Kim.
Okay, thank you.
Meeting is yours.
Back in business. Okay. So now, at this time, we'll accept nomination for our vice chairperson, and I would like to make a motion to nominate Alan Clugger.
Second.
Do we have a second? Seconded by, is that Patrick? Malley? Alan, do you?
Microphone, microphone.
Is it on?
Is it on?
Hello? Yes, it is on.
Okay. The microphones, can I tell you all? Especially those microphones, you really have to hold them close.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Picks up at. All right. I'll project. Actually, I don't have to project quite this much. Alan, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Diane, a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Hovere.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Malley.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkerson.
Yes.
Congratulations, Diane.
Okay. Thank you. So I will accept a nomination for secretary at this time.
I nominate Alan Williams for the position of secretary of the Planning Board.
And that's a motion?
Didn't we just nominate Alan Williams for the?
Alan, that was Alan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes. Yes, for secretary.
Right.
Yes. Need a second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Patrick Malley. Alan Williams, do you accept?
I accept.
Okay. Diane, a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Clugger.
Yes.
Ms. Hovere.
Yes.
Mr. Malley.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkerson.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, we're going to appoint our professionals and staff.
Kim, before we go on, I just, on behalf of the board, would like to thank Nate Siegel for his many years as secretary of the board. Nate, thank you very much. You've done a great job on behalf of the board and behalf of the borough. Thank you.
I will second that. So now, I'll accept, we're going to appoint our professionals, and I'll accept, I guess, shall I, I will make the motion that we continue with Roger Thomas from Dolan and Dolan for our board attorney. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alan Williams. Diane, a roll call vote, please. Do I, do I have to ask you to accept?
Nope.
No, okay.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Greenberg, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Clugger.
Yes.
Ms. Hovere.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Malley.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkerson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, now for our planner, I would like to make a motion to nominate Alan Shechtel of Shechtel Planners LLC. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Nate Siegel. Diane, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Clugger.
Yes.
Ms. Hovere.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Malley.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkerson.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we will, I'll make a motion to appoint our engineer, Bruce Koch of CME Associates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Patrick Malley. Diane, a roll call vote.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Clugger.
Yes.
Ms. Hovere.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Malley.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkerson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and finally, we, I will make a motion to nominate Diane Ray to continue as our board clerk. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Nate. Diane, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Clugger.
Yes.
Ms. Hovere.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Malley.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkerson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. So I'd like to thank all of our professionals for continuing with us, providing their services. Next, we just have to set our meeting dates for the coming year. This list has been circulated. I will read the dates into the record. Do we?
Then we'll publish them.
And then they'll be published. So this is our January meeting, January 17th, 2013, February 21st, 2013, March 21st, April 18th, May 9th, June 20th, July 18th, August 15th, September 12th, October 17th, November 21st, and December 19th, 2013. Do we just do a?
Just a voice vote.
So all in.
Just a motion, because you have to have a motion to vote on it.
Motion to adopt?
There you go.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we now have set our meeting dates for the coming year. We are actually going to table the adoption of our rules of order because one of our agenda items is, in the near future, is to review our rules of order and make sure that they are up to date. So at this time, I will accept a motion to close this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairperson, can I just remind the folks at the other end of the desk to please speak into the microphone clearly so we can hear you down this end? Thank you.
Thank you. So we will take a five-minute break, and we will, our next meeting starts at 7:30. January 17th, meeting of the Highland Park Planning Board to order. Diane, roll call, please.
Ms. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Ms. Greenberg. Mr. Clugger.
Here.
Mr. Lanaris.
Here.
Ms. Hovere.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Malley.
Ms. Wilson.
Ms. Wilkerson.
Here.
And Mr. Luthman.
Okay, so first order of business is, I would like to approve our minutes from the September meeting, September 20th, 2012. I found just a couple of minor grammatical issues. Very minor. Now, we'll just quickly, can I just?
Sure, sure.
Can I just give them to Diane?
Yes.
And I don't have to read them?
If they're just simply grammatical.
They're simple grammatical errors where like an R and A or it was missed, okay?
Oh, okay, sure.
But are there any other comments regarding the September minutes?
No.
Okay. So I will accept a motion then to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, so we do, just a voice vote.
Yeah, just voice vote.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then abstained.
And any abstained? Okay, thank you. Oh. Oh, geez, okay. So, in accordance with the Public Meeting Act, notice of this meeting has been provided by filing a copy thereof with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Highland Park Mirror, and the Highland Park Monitor on January 3rd, 2013, and by posting a copy thereof on the Borough of Highland Park website and on the bulletin board on the main floor of this building. The fire exits are located to the left and right of council chambers. So when we, at our last meeting, we closed while, we were in the public comment portion of our meeting, and we are going to open the meeting by opening to the public to continue with public comments regarding this application. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address. I am going to ask, assuming that there may be a fair number of people that want to speak based on our last meeting, that you please try to keep your comments to three minutes. I don't want you to limit what you're saying, I just don't want you to be overly redundant, and if it's comments that have been made over and over again, please take the time you need to make your comment, but be mindful that there may be a lot of other people that want to get to speak. I am going to, after three minutes go by, I will give you a little high sign so you can start wrapping up your comments. So, at this time, I will open up the meeting for public comment. If you'd like to speak, I think you can come right to the microphone.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Would you be kind enough to state your name and address, please, for the record?
My name is Jane Kenny. I live at 235 Grant Avenue in Highland Park, and I've lived in this borough for over 30 years, yikes. And I just wanted to, I was an original member of the redevelopment committee that was formed in Highland Park, and I've also spent a lot of my professional career in government working towards good urban planning, smart growth, sustainable growth. And I've always been pretty proud of Highland Park and the way it's looked at energy efficiency and trying to be really ahead of the curve in terms of how we promote ourselves as a green community. So I was just a little dismayed at some of the plans for this project because really, it really goes against what a good plan for a walkable community can be. You don't want to be, I believe, in this day and age, a community for the promotion of more cars. And I find that more and more people, especially people that are, as their kids are growing, are more interested in the walking urban community. And I think that it's really something that we in this town should think about very seriously. Of course, we need ratables, of course, we want business to attract business, we want to have a prosperous community, but let's not sell ourselves short, and let's make sure that our downtown and our Main Street that we have thought about for many years and talked about and cared about has the potential to continue being a walkable community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Would you be good enough to state your name and address, please?
My name is Steve Nolan, 97 Lincoln Avenue, Highland Park. During the time that I've lived in Highland Park as a resident, and then in particular my time as a councilperson and as mayor, I think that there have been a number of factors that I've heard from residents that they've said are very important to them. And the ones that I've heard most often are taxes, downtown redevelopment, and pedestrian safety. Those are the top three without exception when I've talked to people. And when we drafted the redevelopment plan, this is close to 10 years ago, we drafted it with those things in mind to try to address those issues in the community. And the site that's at issue before the board today was of particular concern. We have very, very long curb cuts, almost the entire site is a curb cut on Raritan Avenue, a gas station and repair use, lots of cars stored on-site, at least at the time the plan was passed, a poorly maintained one-story building setback from the sidewalk and very low tax payments because of that. And over the past 10 years, we have made efforts, we made efforts to try to bring developers to this site. And we had one developer who was interested, and that's the developer that's here tonight. Now, I can tell you that the first plan, the first project that came before us, was a bit of a disappointment, and that's probably an understatement. The developer came forward and said, what we'd like to do is pretty up the building and put some parking in front. So if you go up 27 into Edison and look at the 7-Eleven that's there, I think that's the concept that they had in mind. And what we said was, that's not imperative of what we're trying to do, you really need to look at the plan and come up with some elements that address what we're concerned about. And the current proposal, I think, in a lot of ways does that. It demolishes an old building, it eliminates an eyesore that offers nothing to a block that struggles. And anyone who's lived here for a long time knows that that block has struggled. It permanently removes the gas station used from the corner, it substantially reduces curb cuts, puts a new tax-paying entity on the books, and gives us a two-story building at the street front. Now, is it exactly what the plan says? No, it's not. And I don't think that there's a project that this board has approved that met every requirement of the zoning. It's the function of this board to consider exceptions and decide whether they make sense in the context of the entire project. And I've heard some people say, well, I object to any variance being given whatsoever in this space. We should give no variances because that would set a precedent. And I think that we need to remember that it's the role of this board to consider variances, and that this board has traditionally given variances that are reasonable and make sense. In fact, if anything, giving variances is the precedent with this board. If we look at the Berman Hardware site, we approved a street front parking lot with two entrances onto Raritan Avenue just a few years ago. That was a redevelopment plan which is approved by this board. We look at Pittari, we approved off-street parking, and we gave relief from the on-site parking on a street that has very little parking. Now, if we had said no exceptions, I think we would not have those prices and we wouldn't have any investment. So the concern that I have, and I will be brief, not a chairperson, is that the signal that we're sending, if we say that the price of doing development in Highland Park is you have to do everything exactly the way we want you to do it, is that we don't want investment in this town. And we have an applicant coming before this board who has done a lot of good things in terms of the project. I think that the elements proposed by the objectors, there are some great elements there, but we haven't tested them with engineering testimony, and more importantly, I don't see anybody standing up to write a check. And the concern that I have is that this block will continue in the same role that it's been over the past 30, 40 years. We haven't had a project on that block in 40 years. There's been nothing that's happened. And I think this is the time for this board to consider something that addresses a lot of the issues. So, thank you.
Thanks. If we do have seats on the side of the room, if people want to come across, yes, Alan?
I ask a question for the member of the public?
Sure.
Who's this spoke? Mr. Nolan, follow-up question? You used the word "we" a couple of times. I'm sure some of them were referring to your time on the Planning Board or in council or as mayor, but some of them as?
As mayor.
As redevelopment agency.
Correct.
So there was a question I had, I didn't get a chance to ask the redevelopment agency member last time.
Okay.
I think that they would be, be a lot easier to meet some of the requirements of the redevelopment plan if we were dealing with a larger parcel.
Correct.
Like, for example, if it was combined with the parcel next to it or behind it.
Correct.
Do you know if the redevelopment agency made any efforts to speak to the owners of the property behind it, whether they would be interested in, had any interest in buying the property in front or people to the side so that we'd be able to combine lots and be able to meet much more of the requirements and the intent of the master plan?
There's no question that if you look at the back of the plan in the appendix, the dream was to develop the entire block, have a large parking lot in the back, and have the entrance be from the side. There's no question that that's what we wanted to do. And there was a redevelopment project immediately to the south of that property which failed, but we did talk to that property owner and said, we need you to give proceeds so we can have your parking access, and she agreed to do that. Problem is, the project failed. And so now it's just sitting as a house, and there are no proceeds, and there's nothing. I also talked to the owner of the property where BD Big is, and I said, are you interested in developing that corner? Because what I really would like to see is that entire corner dealt with as a unit. He says, I'm not interested in doing that, and you can do whatever you want. So that's where we are with that. I want to raise one other issue, though, while I'm thinking of it. There was a comment made about the amendment to the redevelopment plan and how that would stop any gas station from coming in in the future. It's not the case. We removed that special use from the redevelopment plan to prevent an applicant from using the plan to get access. Doesn't change the fact that that's a pre-existing uninformed use. And you'll notice that Sunoco has left the pylon sign, they've left the island, they've left the service base, and that's because they're trying to show that this isn't an abandonment. So the concern that I have is if we make this property so hard to develop, what Sunoco is going to do is they're going to say, you know what? Fire sale, we'll sell it for as cheap as we can to somebody who wants to open a new gas station there, and we'll be right back where we started. That's my concern. If anyone has this question, we'd have to answer it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak at this time? Okay. Rob?
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Your name and address, please?
Robert Rosener, 22 Harrison Avenue. Thank you. Okay, I actually wrote something else, but I wouldn't forget what I wanted to say, so if you don't mind if I read. Some of you in the room know that I bike almost every day or every day. It's basically my main source of transportation on a daily basis. My experience is that driveways are dangerous. I've been hit by a car using a drive light curb cut like the one proposed in this application, and it was one that was close to an intersection, not in the middle of it, in the middle of the block. I saw the alternative plans presented by the objective group, and if it's possible to develop a site without a curb cut and within compliance of our town's plans, why would you not demand it? And I recall the discussion last month about engineered plans versus the mere scheme, which Mr. Nolan pointed to today. But the fact is that the objective presented some credible evidence that an alternative without a curb cut exists or is possible, and we can leave the practicality of that plan for another discussion on another day. But I feel that the design guidelines are there to protect me as a cyclist, so why would we ignore them? And I just wanted to point out that mid-block driveway curb cuts may be necessary for properties in the middle of the block that don't have another access to the corner or know the road. So if that's, if that's something we might have to deal with in the future for other property developments, and the goal is to reduce curb cuts, why wouldn't we do one here when there's an alternative from the side, from South Second? And as to 7-Eleven's two models, the urban versus suburban model, we're a walking town. That's our vision, it's in our plans. Our kids, my kids, walk to school. We have an organized walking school bus system. Given these facts, it seems incongruous to me to go with the suburban model 7-Eleven just because the applicant put forward that plan. Tell them we want the urban model without a curb cut. I know of an urban model 7-Eleven in New Jersey that has no on-site parking at all, so I know that the chain can be flexible. And as a quid pro quo, are there other ideas that the board of Highland Park could consider that might help the applicant but also ensure that our important goals are met? For example, consider the seven street spots. I think last month, there was some testimony about having an X every so often. Could we do away with the X on this site? Or could we make the adjoining street spots at this site limited to 20 minutes or less or some other short term? That might help increase the turnover of cars, and there'd always be one available. And could we allow a tasteful sign that says, you know, more parking in the rear with an arrow directing traffic to second? Has this, has the town considered a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes? Since this is a redevelopment area, isn't a pilot a possibility? Maybe in exchange for dropping the curb cut, the town could offer a tax break. We heard Mr. Landis last month say that the existing vacant building does not pay full taxes, and that the new building would pay more taxes. Maybe instead of paying the full increase that is expected, they could just pay a little bit more. And maybe, you know, then that way, we both win. Highland Park gets more taxes than it's currently collecting, which answers a concern that Mr. Nolan just said. Plus, we get a new building on the site without a curb cut, and the applicant gets lower taxes than the woodcocks, and so we all win. My point is that we could negotiate. Could we, we should explore other possibilities, and I just want some assurance that all these ideas or even other ones have been considered before we accept the Raritan Avenue curb And I personally don't find credible the applicant's demand that the northbound driveway from 27 northbound would make or break their business mile. If I were a driver on 27 and needed coffee or something, and there were spots open on the street, I'd pull over and get out. And if there were no open street spots, I wouldn't mind driving another 20-some feet to the corner, making a right turn, and driving another 20 feet, and pulling into the parking lot. Do we want to cater to car culture so much that we're willing to put our residents in danger to avoid forcing 7-Eleven patrons from driving another 50 feet with one more right-hand turn? And I also recall last month hearing some testimony about the deed restriction from 1868 or something was one of the reasons that they couldn't put the building closer to the corner. I just want to ask, isn't the existing building closer than that to the corner? Either way, are we really going to worry about some long-lost beneficiary of some 19th-century easement coming out of the woodwork and pressing their rights for staples or whatever else it was? Aren't there other ways around that restriction? And if that's being raised by the applicant as the reason not to consider alternatives, And if that's being raised by the applicant as the reason not to consider alternatives, it raises a question, at least in my mind, as to whether the applicant is really exploring options in good faith. Essentially, I just wanted to say, as a caring member of our community, I wish to lodge my position to the plan that includes the curb cut. I'll have a problem with 7-Eleven, and I think other variances might be possible, so I don't want to stand up and say that you got to do it exactly the way we want it, but I think the curb cut is a major issue. So I'm asking that you force them to drop the curb cut idea. If this means that we risk losing the applicant, end up with a fence for another year, but ultimately end up with a better development that lasts 50 years, I for one am willing to take that risk. I think we'll find another developer. All right? That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Okay. We have someone coming up.
Do you swear that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Tina Weishouse. I live at 143 North Fifth Avenue. I also want to speak to the issue of safety. I've been a resident for 25 years in Highland Park, and I have an office downtown at 324 Raritan Avenue, which has a curb cut and a parking lot behind it. It's part of the petmarb buildings between Third and Fourth. And I was driving my car and hit a bicyclist. So it was very traumatic to me. It was very, you know, he was okay, but it was potentially a really life-threatening situation. I think those kind, it's just been really, at the point that that happened, it struck me how incredibly dangerous all of these, you know, curb cuts are, where you have to turn in and cyclists aren't really aware of where the curb cuts are, so they're not expecting you to turn, they may not see your turn signal, whatever that is. It's just to add another one where it doesn't have to be like that, I think is really the wrong direction for this town. And I think that the previous speaker made the point that if we have to risk the development, it's okay to risk it if it's, again, you know, if we're measuring against the safety of our pedestrians and our cyclists. Because I've lived in town for 25 years, I've seen a lot of projects which there was opposition, but they went through, and it was in retrospect that it was a mistake for the town. And you can't undo something like that. I mean, from the, you know, the astroturf at the high school to selling off Lafayette, you know, and there is always good reasons for these things, and there's always, you know, good intentions on both sides. But when you do it, it's done. And, you know, I just think we can do better than this. And if the bottom line is safety and curb cuts, then that should be what your responsibility is to this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Your name and address, please.
Mary Stott Botton, 709 Madison Avenue.
Should we ask people to spell their last names?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Can you spell your last name, Mary?
Sure. B-O-T-T-E-O-N.
Thank you.
This is a personal statement that Rachel Ruggeri and I have prepared and signed together in support of this project. Madam Chair, as you know, Rachel is unable to be here as she's a newborn at home, which for her is 328 Cleveland Avenue. Her last name is spelled R-U-G-G-I-R-I. I've served the past four and a half years as a commissioner with the RDA. As did I. Rachel served as a commissioner during the period in which the agency examined their proposal with regard to the plan and unanimously approved it, determining it met the overall goals for redeveloping the site. We thank RDA Chairman Landis for his availability at the last meeting, and he is expected here again tonight to answer additional questions on the agency's behalf, as that is not my role here. It is the time to give personal opinions as private citizens, and we greatly appreciate it. Rachel and I are longtime residents and taxpayers of Highland Park. We're concerned with ratables and real estate values. Our families have run businesses here, with parents raising young children. Our purpose in speaking on the planning board record is to document public support for the variances and hope rehabilitation of this parcel can begin. We see this development as a very positive, very successful step for Highland Park, completely in keeping with the town's current offerings and completely in keeping with the borough's aesthetic character and desire for mixed-use upscale building architecture, green improvements, outdoor eating space, and improved pedestrian safety. To those who have said this project has no value or is detrimental, we could not disagree more. We see many benefits to the town at large, and we're going to take a few minutes to briefly describe them. This is a designated, blighted, and underutilized lot for years. It does not represent Highland Park well during the day, and in the pitch-black darkness of this rundown corner, it's even worse and potentially less safe. To remove one of our most obvious vacancies is a great need, and we would be irresponsible if we didn't try to do so. If the economy picks up someday, as we would all hope, redeveloping the site now that this project would not prevent someone from acquiring any of our remaining vacancies or rehabilitating other sites in need. Granting the variances requested by this applicant does not set a precedent for curb cuts or small monument signs, as every developer has to make their own case. This applicant has a proven track record of success and the willingness to depart from the size and appearance of their typical retail buildings and signage. They've made many compromises in an attempt to fit in and be successful, and they come with funding. There have been great proposals processed in Highland Park only to have the funding fall through. Even with the for-sale sign on the fence, no Highland Park residents, business owners, or developers purchase the property. If the claim is that these individuals could not afford to take this on, that should again speak volumes about the merits of this well-funded outside offer in our hands. Large or small, every business must explore how to position themselves in the market, such as with the Fresh Healthy Foods Initiative being offered by 7-Eleven, described in a recent New York Times article. Rachel and I think the more access to fresh foods, the better, and sometimes that may mean stores within close proximity to one another. Local business assistance is also always available here in Highland Park and should be taken advantage of. Efforts to protect a business are completely understandable, and we're sympathetic to this. But it should be recognized that the main issues of contention, such as curb cuts and monument signs, already exist for several of our businesses. For them, as for this applicant, these variances are necessary to bring in customers. Even if shelter, there are no guarantees any current business can give that they will indefinitely remain here. Someone may sell, people get sick, they retire, the landlord raises the rent, and the store relocates or closes down. We're obligated to make long-range and unbiased decisions to account for these possibilities. Even if this new retail store did not succeed, if the lease was not purchased, or if customers gravitate to other stores, as is always their choice, it would be evident the site has been completely rehabbed and would present an attractive invitation for someone else virtually turnkey. As a green community, regardless of whether customers choose to drive or walk to the site, Highland Park can be proud of the environmental accomplishments that would result from this project, ranging from a reduction in water and sanitary sewer demands to the installation of landscaping and shade trees. The redesign of this property also opens up the visibility to stores obscured from view and at the same time preserves the site of the historical church. In summary, and it's been almost a year now since the project was approved, all these issues are still relevant, and on any given day, we still compete with Edison and New Brunswick. What has changed is that the two stores across the street have now left also, and our entire region has a tough road ahead to rebuild after October's hurricane. We should not lose this opportunity while other towns build. We're pleased to see the modifications that have come from these proceedings, but we also hope that expectations of what can be further accomplished are realistic and that the variances requested will be granted. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wanting to speak?
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Would you state your name and address and spell your last name, please?
Catherine Chitari, C-I-O-R-C-I-A-R-I.
Thank you.
I live at 1312 Dryer Place. I've been a resident of Highland Park for over 30 years, and in that time, I've never seen so many empty storefronts in our town, and also many that have opened and closed so quickly. So when I heard that 7-Eleven wanted to open a store on Second Avenue at the old Sunoco Station, I was thrilled because I feel that, excuse me, that 7-Eleven will not only make an eyesore of an empty corner productive, but they will also bring jobs to a well-needed economy. And I believe that 7-Eleven will be here for years to come. Some might say we don't need another convenience store in Highland Park, but I say we don't need another empty storefront in Highland Park. I just hope that you do vote yes.
Thank you. Yes?
I think people just have to speak into it, Mary.
You have to be close to it to amplify.
On TV, they put the mic on people.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, yes, yes.
Would you state your name and address and please spell your last name?
I'll bet you Diane knows how to spell my last name. Lois Webbing, 100 North Second Avenue. Can you hear me, her? Okay. I don't have any nice testimony, but I was going to ask questions, but since we're at the end, I won't ask questions. From what I understand, not attending meetings but reviewing the entire file for 7-Eleven downstairs twice bothering poor Diane, I understand that this is 7-Eleven. It's a two-story building with offices above, regional offices above the stores, what the paperwork said, and there will be an elevator exemption through the ADA because the both, either, neither floor exceeds 3,000 square feet. But that tells me, as an advocate for people with disabilities, is that there can't possibly be any 7-Eleven employees in the upper-level management who are in wheelchairs, such as veterans, because there's no elevator to go up the staircase I saw on the site plan. And that tells me, too, that future people with disabilities will not be permitted in any way to the upper-level management regional offices. Now, if everybody here who's been here 25, 30 years remembers, Sunoco used to rent land across the street. The tow truck was parked across at the old firehouse where the Raspberry Beret unfortunately just vacated. And they actually, Sunoco would park cars, rented the property across the street next to the Rutgers Gun Shop, the wedge-shaped land. That land is still vacant, I'm sure. I don't know if anyone asked if that's available for parking. Skipping slowly. I asked a tractor-trailer driver with a CDLA license what he thought of the photocopied plan that I have for the 50-foot, whatever it is, 60-foot tractor-trailer making the delivery. If I understand, coming in, say, north on 27, turning over the Mountebell Island, entering the exit lane, parking in front of the doors, but that blocks the handicap space, the handicap access aisle, and two or three, how many, four parking spaces, actually probably both sides, if the people on closer to South Second cannot exit because the truck is there. This tractor-trailer, longtime tractor-trailer driver said, "I see what they're doing, but there's a much easier way configuration for a delivery truck if it was at the back." I won't go into it. You've got engineers all over the place in this room. They should, if anybody has asked a CDL driver, they can tell you there's actually an easier configuration. Couple days later, that tractor-trailer driver said, "Hey, I was just up Ryder's Lane. There's a 7-Eleven in East Brunswick. I had to stop on the road because he had to pull across Ryder's Lane and back into that 7-Eleven to make his delivery." Is that what's going to happen here? I mean, I know that's not the plan, but things change when items are approved. We just have to think about this and safety. And has anyone contacted, if it still exists, keep Middlesex moving? We used to get postcards from them from Brunswick somewhere. They're trying to keep safety, they're trying to do pedestrian, eliminate the congestion of the traffic. I don't know if they're still around, if they can give any suggestions. And then parking at rear. When you look at the plan, now, I just today waved to one of our electrical contractors in town with a full-size van. They're almost 18 feet, 17, 18 feet long. We've got pickup trucks, we've got carpools, we've got firemen. With full-size vehicles, not all have little jellybean foreign cars. Now, if one or two of them park at the rear, because that's where the parking is available, and the recycling truck comes in, but our contractor guys didn't pull all the way forward, so they're sticking out, that's going to hold up traffic for your recycling truck. We wish it was a larger parcel. It's not a larger parcel. I don't see how it's going to work. It's going to be very, there's going to be a lot of backing up. And you want safety? Think about it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak at this time? I think we have someone in the...
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Absolutely.
Would you get closer to the mic?
Right.
And then state your name and address and spell your last name?
I'm Melanie McDermott. I live at 330 South Third here in Highland Park. My last name is spelled M-C-D-E-R-M-O-T-T. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm sorry for being a little bit late. I don't have long remarks to make. I just wanted to add my voice to the chorus of voices, asking the planning board to turn down the special request for waivers that would be necessary to make this project go through. That doesn't, as I understand, that still leaves the possibility of a creative solution alive. I would endorse that. But I just, again, want to echo what others have said about staying true to our vision of what Highland Park is and what it can be, a bicycle-friendly, pedestrian-friendly community of small businesses. And I think it's quite clear that, and the reason why a waiver is called for is that this proposed development flies in the face of that vision. I think a new economic day is around the corner, and I'm very hopeful about what that can bring for Highland Park. And in closing, I will just say, as a bicycle commuter, I feel like I have a special personal stake in this decision. Thanks very much.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
And your name and address, please?
Jane Ryan, R-E-I-N, and it's 47 Cleveland Avenue.
Thank you.
I can't almost want to say ditto in regards to what the last person just said. I completely agree. We, you know, this is not the vision for Highland Park as we set out, and I don't think making all these exceptions to create this, you know, potentially good development is necessary if we're going to compromise what we have already laid out as our values to this town. You know, development is a good thing. The region's obviously being redeveloped. Just take a glance at New Brunswick, and we can see that. I don't think all development is good. I think it has to be smart development, and I don't think this is smart development. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else from the public? Okay.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God? Yes, I do. Your name and address, please.
Morgan Chen. I live at 125 Magnolia Street.
Thank you.
I live right around the corner of the proposed site. The value of my property is correlated directly to what happens at the Sunoco lot, and I want to repeat what has already been said to this board. When downtowns are walkable, property values go up. When downtowns are less walkable, property values go down. By granting these variances, we move away from a walkable downtown. The only way a walkable downtown can be developed is by staying the course and not allowing such blatant breaks. It is only when everyone knows the rules and follows them that we set a par that businesses will adhere to and take seriously. I believe the variances that 7-Eleven is asking for is a way to push their vehicular model into Highland Park with little regard for the sustainable walkable downtown that is envisioned. Why can't 7-Eleven consider the creative alternatives that have already been suggested of putting parking in the rear? I believe it's because they think it's a pain in the neck, i.e., it's doable, but we just don't want to do it. But when I go to write it, I have to park in the back. That's a pain in the neck. When I go to Park Deli, parking is in the back. That's a pain in the neck. When I go to, if I want to go to Raspberry Beret, parking's on the side. That's a pain in the neck. See, it's a pain in the neck, but it directly governs our walkability factor, and that's what I don't want to let go. So why can't you conform to our master plan? The concessions that 7-Eleven has made, such as a smaller sign or a change in building materials, these concessions pale in comparison to their demands for curb cuts. I disagree with 7-Eleven's current model to ask for variances so they can use its models uncalled for. I respectfully say to 7-Eleven, put the parking in the back of the building like so many of the other businesses before you and Highland Park have done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak at this time? Okay.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Denise May Fryer, M-A-Y-F-R-Y-E-R, 314 Wayne Street.
Thank you.
I don't have much to add to what everybody else had said, except that I enjoy walking around my town. I enjoy riding my bicycle around my town. I enjoy riding my bicycle with my children who are 10 around my town. The cutouts, as somebody previously pointed out, Mr. Rosener, they're not good. They're dangerous for people. I respectfully request that we don't do the cutouts. If we have to go through with the development, I really respectfully request that we don't do that. My concern about 7-Eleven is that it's going to look like the mess over there by Dunkin' Donuts, where you have people, all kinds of crazy traffic between the Raceway and the Dunkin' Donuts, and people coming in and out. And so, yeah, we'll put this in, and hopefully it'll go in the back, if that's where we're going with this, and I hope we go that way. But if we don't, there's going to be all kinds of cars coming there, and if the rest of that property across the street and around there gets developed as well, too, which is what we all hope, you're going to have the same kind of mess you've got by the Raceway and the Dunkin' Donuts. And, you know, do we want more of that within a two-block span in a walking town where people bicycle and walk their dogs, and we have young people and old people and just generic people like me who like to walk? So, anyway, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak at this time? Okay.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yep.
And your name and address, please?
Shelley Saal. Last name spelled S-A-A-L. And my address is 437 Dennison.
Thank you.
I'm going to be reading as well. I'm in support of the current building. I fully support the plans for a well-established business model like 7-Eleven to occupy a newly constructed building on the Sunoco lot. Because the occupant is already in place, it eases my mind as a taxpayer and resident that the building will not be vacant, as so many of our other properties are. The goal is to keep the property active, which will best suit the borough financially and will increase visibility and usability, hopefully, for nearby business and will increase interaction between stores and people. I really like the idea of the 7-Eleven being there, not just because of the stability of the company, but also depending on the height of the barrier... of the company, but also depending on the height of the barrier between the property we're talking about and the current strip mall next to it, it could actually open up visually, seeing those other stores. Right now, I don't know they're there. If I didn't know this town, I don't know they're there. So I'm not sure how much business is actually taken away from the strip mall that's there. So I think that's really, could be a benefit. This is the better bet for long-term occupancy than a building being erected without a tenant in place. So right now, we're facing possibility of already knowing who's going to exist there. If somebody just came in and said, I want to build a building, it's going to be a gorgeous building, it's accessible, all the things that you're talking about, but I don't know who's going to be in there. How long will we need to wait until we find out who is at the business that's going to be in? And that could be, you know, we don't know. But this is a known entity, and I think that that's very helpful. A convenience store has consistent flow of customers, so it's less likely the lack of parking would stop people from coming, and traffic flow would be, no, more, it's just, it's more, but it's also more fluid. You don't have people parking there for long periods of time, and then people searching, where else can I park? I think that is a good thing. The builders, sounds like they have adjusted the plans to address traffic safety. I have a question for you. I didn't look closely at the plan, but the curb cuts we're talking about, they're closer to the interest, to where the stoplight is?
They'll be twenty-eight feet from the corner. So the start of the curb cut is twenty-eight feet off of the intersection corner.
Okay.
And then runs for, what did we say, twenty, how, what is the actual curb cut opening?
Further away than the existing curb cuts are. That's what I'm thinking.
It's like...
Depending on the existing location, distance, relative distance, and how wide the curb cuts are now versus the proposed.
I just want to make sure I'm not in a state...
Shut which door, is that? Sure.
This is Exhibit 820. The existing curb cut closest to the intersection, excuse me, is actually located on the intersection itself. It's considered to have zero corner clearance from the radius to the start of the apron today. Under the proposed conditions, as has been mentioned, would be approximately twenty-eight feet from the intersection. Sure, the curb return, again, this is referring to Exhibit 820, the curb return to the start of the curb return at the intersection itself. So just under thirty feet. The right turn out...
So just for the record, I'm sorry, Mr. Olivo is providing testimony regarding the curb cut.
I'm sorry, just for the record, stating my appearance for the record, Charles Olivo of Stonefield Engineering and Design. The right turn out portion of the driveway is fifteen feet wide, as is the right turn in portion of the driveway.
Is fifteen feet about the, oops, sorry, is fifteen feet about the front, like, from Board turning to Secretary? That's not fifteen feet? No.
I have no idea.
I need to visualize that.
To give you a frame of reference, one lane on a highway...
Yeah.
Is about twelve feet wide.
Okay.
So this is just slightly larger than that. The curb opening itself, from the point of the radius to the middle island, where there's a pedestrian refuge in that area, is about twenty-four feet. And you come to the island.
From the building, where the, is that the building, the gray?
Yes.
Okay. And between the building and when the curb cut starts, where you can pull, a car's coming out?
Where you can pull, pull out of the site?
Yeah, or going in.
So you understand it's a one-way in and a one-way out?
Right.
Okay.
So from the building to the point of entry, I would say, is approximately twenty feet. And from the building to the point of exit, the closest part of the car, is about forty to forty-five feet.
Okay, so if somebody's coming out or going in, will a bicyclist or anybody be able to, and the people walking, be able to see the car there?
Well, it's likely.
I think that's...
Yeah, okay, you know, yeah, so...
The reason, the reason...
Okay, just it's a matter of procedure, really, that we're sort of at a point where we're accepting public comments and not receiving more testimony. So we're in a little bit of a gray area.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to the white or black, whatever.
You're going to go to the continuation of your testimony?
You're going to summarize your comments for us. Thank you.
It really is helpful, because, because we're talking about safety. So if this particular curb cut is going to be clearly obvious, where the car's coming out, the, as a bicyclist, I can see people are coming out. It's not similar to, I think, what the other woman was worried about, where she hit somebody, unfortunately, where there's a building, my, front of my car is just moving past that, and you can't see who's coming. That's a totally different kind of curb cut than this. And so my point is that the online, on-lot parking is visibly clearer from the street. Therefore, drivers won't need to enter the lot to find out if spots are open or not, and I can see who's coming out and who's going in. It's a pretty clear, you know, place. The other thing is, as far as the bicyclist, and I am worried about bicycle safety, I want my child to be able to know the rules of the road, and to be able to feel safe slowing down when they come to a curb cut, and speeding up when they notice safe. I think we are dealing with a couple of things here in Highland Park. One is, I don't see any courses open to the public to learn how to ride a bike safely. I think we can do that, folks. And, and the other thing is that...
In closing, Ms. Saal?
It's incumbent on the bicyclist to be safe also, and not to ride on sidewalks. I think you want a walking community, you want a biking community, then follow the rules of the road as a bicyclist, and that's very important.
Okay, thank you.
I know, there's a little bit more, I'm sorry.
But a very little bit more.
Okay. I'm concerned about Main Street building vacancies in Highland Park, not only for tax reasons, but for safety reasons. When a building looks vacant, it is a great attraction for a lot of trouble. And luckily, we haven't had it with this place, but it's a very possibility. I am worried about the construction site. I want the things, the plan to go through, but the construction site is a very big concern of mine for safety reasons. And one other thing that I am very, a little disturbed about, in our last meeting, there was somebody on the planning board, or alternate person, who seemed to be dead-set against this. And I don't think it's the place of a person on the board, or an alter, a planning board, or the alternate, to be so clearly against or for something in this process. I think that they possibly should recuse themselves. So please consider your position on the board, or as alternate, and figure that out, because I'd rather not have you representing, if you're not, you know, if you're being killed.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Yes.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address?
My name is Sue Anderson, spelled the usual way. Sixty-three Cleveland Avenue. I feel like, and I know this is the planning board, and so variances are brought before you, and that right now, we're fighting over the scraps, the scraps being curb cuts or no curb cuts, and signs or no signs seem to be the issues. But I would, I would ask you to keep the bigger issue in mind, that if you cave to this, cave to the corporate interests, cave to the suits, next comes Taco Bell, Burger Bagels, and maybe if we're really lucky, Walmart. And we have a big strip mall on Raritan Avenue. And I don't think that's what any of us want, and if the only way to stop that is to say, no, you have to follow our rules, there will be no curb cuts, you follow our rules, this is a walkable community, it's not Edison, it's not a strip mall. If that's what you have to do, then I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak?
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God? Your name and address, please?
Joan Gardenberg, 402 Lincoln Avenue. I'm very sorry that I wasn't here at the last meeting, but from what I've felt in the community, and I've lived here about ten years, I hope we don't lose this project. And I understand the issue of the curb cut as presented on that plan, it's a very large curb cut on Raritan Avenue. I believe that you've been shown an alternate plan that may involve no curb cut on Raritan. But I'd like to suggest that there may be, even still, an alternative with maybe a smaller, maybe a single curb cut on Raritan. 7-Eleven seems very interested in the right-hand turn traffic off of Raritan. I can, I get that. I mean, that, that could be a very important thing. But maybe, for example, there could just be a right turn in, with then the double, you know, exit in the back, the entrance and exit in the back. So I'm just going to keep it very simple. I'm a little ignorant, because I wasn't here, and I'll just stop at that. But I think that there may be a compromise, so I hope you consider.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak at this time? Yes.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Ken Anolik, I live at 208 North Second Avenue.
And could you speak into the mic so...
Better? Better now?
And can you spell your last name first, please?
A-N-O-L-I-K. So I came late to this meeting, I wasn't sure what all the issues were, but I see this. I say, I'm a medical doctor, I take care of geriatrics primarily. And living on Second Avenue, I come to the light all the time. And I, I come there a number of times a day, and I see who walks by. It's often people, maybe from Adelaide, the apartments in Adelaide. They have shopping baskets, they have kids, they have strollers. I think this would be a terrible thing for them to have to navigate this, similar to what, what is at the Raceway. If you, you know, drive in and out of the Raceway, people take their lives in the end, they're looking around both ways, the car's coming or they're not. Yeah, I don't think it's a good idea to have curb cuts on Raritan from a safety point of view for people walking. And again, I'm, you know, like I said, I'm late to this issue, but this is, I see how people walk, I know how older people get by, and it's not a very safe proposal, from what I can see.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Your name and address, please?
Daryl Voorhees, 300 Donaldson Street. I'm actually a newcomer to town. I just moved here, I have a five-year-old son, and a five-month-old son. So, you know, my perspective in coming into this, for, you know, the future of, you know, their safety, walking around town, also, you know, larger perspective, the environmental impact of the kind of communities that we're all building. And I think that the plan, as it was laid out, addresses those larger concerns, and maybe, you know, some more attention should be put on sticking to that. And, and so doing will also have a better chance of, you know, creating the value of this town and the property values. People will tell you that live here, that one of the major benefits is that it's a walkable town, you've heard that repeated here, and that's really a drawing factor. And you'd just be ashamed to throw that aside without fighting to keep that, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God? Your name and address?
Catherine Bull, B-U-L-L, 221 Felton Avenue. I would like to add my voice to the, those opposing the curb cuts. I'm very concerned about them. I remember pushing a stroller with my boys, and going past the Sunoco station, it was always a dicey walk. And in fact, that, on both sides of the street, in that whole area of town, it was, it was just tough going. And I don't think that, you know, families should have to feel that way as they're walking through town, as if their lives were in danger. And the schools have unfortunately had to get rid of the busing, so children are really on their own, sometimes walking down Raritan Avenue to get to school. That, I'm now working in the safe fruits to school program at Voorhees Transportation Center over at Rutgers, and I have become extremely aware in the last year of how dangerous it is for our kids trying to get to school. Drivers are very distracted, walkers are also distracted, but drivers are not paying attention. And if you have a thirty-foot curb cut for somebody to navigate with a little safety island in the middle, you're still putting those people in jeopardy. And I think our youngest citizens deserve a little bit more attention than that. I think, I think we can do better. And I would also, I think, I think that's my main point, but I really would like you also to give consideration to the master plan. It was put together not just by a planner, and not just as an ideal of what the, this town could be, but as a guide for what development should be in this town. And it was put together with a great deal of public input, and I would hate to have that disregarded. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak at this time? Yes.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
And your name and address?
My name is Herb Gross, and I live at 124 South Adelaide Avenue. I would like to ask everyone to please quiet your fears about the trucks. I've been in the trucking business now for over forty-one years, and everybody seems to think that, that the truck drivers are going to be making their own rules. They are not. Your truck drivers today, that will be bringing in supplies to 7-Eleven, these are law-abiding citizens. Make no mistake about that. They are veterans, like myself, who have served this country. And we're not about to make anything impossible for, for the consumer. Give the, give these truck drivers a break. They have different-sized trucks, and we're willing, and I'm willing, to serve on this committee to bring in certain-sized trucks. We have twenty-foot trailers, we have stray jobs, and it will not interfere with children going to school. I'm against that. You have to remember, ladies and gentlemen, that trucks bring food that you have in your home, trucks bring clothes that you're wearing, that your children are wearing, and please, again, I, I'm asking everyone to have a little respect for the truck driver, because the truck driver has a lot of respect for each and every one of you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak at this time? Okay? Getting close.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help Do you swear with testimony that you're about to give will be the truth so help you God?
It's my opinion.
Do you swear that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth so help you God?
A testimony, I guess so.
Your name and address, please.
Judy Yang, fourteen North Second Avenue, Highland Park. Okay, all right. Listen, I moved here about thirty years ago. I thought it was a nice little town, you know, a nice little community. Those of you who know me have had the opportunity for me to annoy you over these thirty years. Okay? Now, all I know is I support the little guy. Why would you think? We, there's rules to follow. You guys make the rules, move in this town, and I kind of feel like the planning board's responsibilities follow those two. You know, you have these rules and you follow those rules, and you guys put them in place. The guys with the deep pockets can try to push other people around, push the little guys around. The little David and Goliath thing going on here, you know? And that, all I'm saying is, you know, the little guys, the small businesses that have been in place or follow the rules, yeah, they'd like to have maybe enter coming on front, better for quote-unquote their business, but you guys didn't let them have it. So are you going to go back and fix that for all those guys? And then someone else going forward says, hey, how about those guys who got that last week or last year? How about that? But I'm the little guy, but the big guy gets it with the deep pockets? I think people go into different things with good intentions, but then they can get corrupted by whatever things and try to bend these rules or whatever. But those rules sit in there, and whether you're alternate or not, whatever, you just listen to them. You guys have the responsibility to follow those rules. You guys put them in place. And going forward, you don't want that next guy to say, hey, you got the deep pockets. You gave it to him. What about me? What's fair is fair. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing, oh. Can she make?
It's up to you.
Um, if you keep it, uh, brief, you can have a, a final. You didn't fulfill your full three minutes, so we'll give you a thirty-second rebuttal.
I just warned them.
Okay, but you're going to keep it to, you know, thirty seconds, okay?
402 Lincoln.
Thank you.
I just, I'm very concerned about bicycle safety too, by the way. I think that, that, just speaking a little bit more about it, if you're driving and you're making a right turn and you've got a bike, you've got a bicycle coming either direction on the sidewalk, I think there's a better chance of seeing what's happening than when you're coming out. And I understand that this curb cut is, is more open than a lot of our curb cuts in town where you're, you're, you know, sneaking out between two buildings. But that, I just wanted to say that, you know, I certainly am concerned about the safety too. I think just maybe other than one direction. And I do think that we learn in town where, where these things are, and maybe there could be like a stop sign, I'm kind of kidding, but kind of not, just for bicycles, especially coming from, um, from the south side, that potentially could be clipped off by cars. So anyhow, I just want to say I'm certainly concerned about the bicycle safety too, but I feel there could be a compromise, and I, that site is the, just a horrible eyesore and hazard to this town for a long time. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, is, well, okay, well, now I'm sorry that I allowed someone to come back because we have someone else coming back. This will be the final person who comes back if you've already been to the line.
Melanie McDermond here again with a very quick addendum, but I did want to come back in, uh, on the subject of bicycle safety. Um, there were remarks made earlier about how bicycles need to be taught to follow the rules, and I, I concur, but I would just say that we are not planning for the rule-abiding, uh, New Jersey car driver and the rule-abiding, uh, New Jersey truck drivers who have much better record. We are planning for the everyday bike driver and, uh, car driver, excuse me. And I can tell you, and I'm sure you all have observed, in this state, the practice is to pull across the curb before you, across the parking, uh, sorry, the sidewalk before you start looking, uh, for, it's not just a matter of visibility, and, and, and then you look for your, your, your brake in traffic and you make your move. So whether the bicyclist is on the sidewalk or on the street, they're in the same hazard. I've been hit by a car coming out of a, a, a parking lot with good visibility, so I know what I'm talking about. Um, and I think that is, that planners and experienced people know how you get good citizens to behave like good citizens even when they're in the cars. It's called traffic calming. Route twenty-seven is a, uh, is a county highway, or it's outside of our local control, but the side streets we do have control over. If we direct, uh, you know, people in and out of a parking lot over the side streets, they will be, by going slower, they will be paying attention and they will behave differently just like in, uh, places like in, uh, Europe and Berkeley and other far-off lands where they actually put in obstructions to make people stop and, and think. So by having a, a curb cut signals a certain kind of highway-like behavior that does, that's, that starts in the parking lot and goes onto the highway. There's no little, small community in between. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So, um, Wanda, did you have, you wanted, you had one person you wanted to follow up with who was not available when?
Yes, thank you so much. Again, Wanda Chin-Monahan from City to Campusano, and I represent Highland Park Future of Citizens Group, and, um, we have one more member of our, um, group who was out of the country at the December hearing, and we'd just like to take five minutes to allow her to make her speech.
Do you swear with testimony that you're about to give will be the truth so help you God?
Yes.
Your name and address, please.
Bobby Fawcett, 442 Cedar Avenue. And if you could just tell us how long you've been a resident of Highland Park? Yeah, I grew up in Highland Park and I moved back in two thousand and four. Okay, and do you have family here? Yes, I do. Okay, and could you just tell us? Oh, I've got two little boys. Okay, and also do you work? Yes, I do. Okay, and can you tell us what your position is? Yes, I'm a director of the investment bank at Citigroup in Manhattan. Okay, and are you a member of Highland Park Future? Yes, I am. Okay, and do you now have or have you ever held any position within Highland Park, either an appointed or volunteer position? Um, let's speak of Highland Park, but that was just sort of a, it wasn't sort of like an official position or such. Okay, and then if you could just tell the board, please, what you're interested in this proceeding? Um, I have, just as a concerned citizen, um, can you just tell them a statement?
Yes, please.
My name is Bobby Fawcett. I live at 442 Cedar Avenue. I'm here to speak to the planning board on my concerns regarding the proposal for a Seven-Eleven convenience store on the corner of South Second and Raritan Avenue. I would like to note to the members of the board that my statements are based upon my professional observations and experience and are not being made in any official capacity as a director at Citigroup or to be taken as an official statement of Citigroup itself. My remarks, much like statements from others at the previous meetings, are my personal perspective only. I have been a director at the investment bank at Citigroup, where I've been working for nearly fifteen years, where I've covered both the residential and small-bounce commercial sector. It's a space I'm intimately familiar with and want to touch upon some points on the macro-commercial economy that we discussed the last meeting in December. This current site became available on or around July two thousand and nine by all accounts, which was one of the worst downturns of the commercial sectors. All signs from both local economic trends and more macro-capital markets trends show positive signs in the small-bounce commercial sector across all asset types. These trends include an increase in new issuance of commercial securitizations and a significant increase in liquidity in this space is demonstrated by new players and the imagination of small-bounce commercial loans. Amidst strong bond buyer interest, Wall Street's twenty-plus active conduits are gearing up for more growth, and most, if not all, are welcoming opportunities to securitize small-bounce loans along with the midsize and larger markets. Private-label CMBS issuance was in excess of forty-five billion in two thousand and twelve, and many industry insiders are expecting further growth by approximately twenty-five, thirty percent in two thousand and thirteen. High-yield CMBS investor giant L&amp;R Properties LLC co-CEO, Tilvin Cobb, suggests that a recent industry gathering that issuance could reach close to eighty billion in two thousand and thirteen. Small-bounce commercial sales in two thousand and twelve were the highest since two thousand and eight, where there was nearly sixty billion in sales for the calendar year. The year-over-year two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve increase in sales is significant at nearly sixty-three percent. While this data may come as an absolute bore to the members of the planning board and broader audience, the evidence is clear that liquidity exists in the markets from Wall Street all the way down to Main Street. It is important information to highlight that we do not need to settle for a project that deviates so significantly from the requirements of our master plan with no evidence provided by the developers, the variances of their proposal are required due to any actual hardships. The developers must mitigate currently constrained automobile and truck access to the site, but that need is driven by the nature of the store proposed rather than by the needs of broader community and planning requirements. In short, the developers propose to build a development with a necessary parking and footprint essential to its own success with no consideration to our community or its master plan. In contrast, recent developments in other communities have demonstrated that townships should demand that developers work within the terms of their master plan in any project. One such recent example, and highlighted by Jim Constantine in his testimony, is the Honda Sport retail store in Metatchin, as well as the work of developers working with municipal planners in neighboring townships. In conclusion, I'd like to remind the board that while there may be different views on the economic future, we can all agree that any economic trend is always cyclical in nature. But poor planning and design will remain a permanent fixture in our community for generations to come. Additionally, it's important to remember that your job in the planning board is to remain an independent body of our township that provides an objective checks and balances review of any prospective changes to our borough's plan and not to serve as a rubber stamp for other reviewing bodies of our borough. Our Main Street is at a crossroads, and there's significant, senior tasks in protecting the future of our community. Like attracts like in development, and a successful vibrant downtown is built block by block, parcel by parcel. A big core of the master plan is, as many folks have talked about, the walkability of the town, but my issue with the master plan is the economic impact to a town. It calls for stores to be sidewalk-facing. It calls for actual misuse, mixed use, uh, which this development doesn't actually have. You know, those are two significant proponents that really do help the local economy. An actual mixed-use building is going to be great. It brings in greater tax revenue. This building has shown to be disingenuous to the mixed-use grounds that it stands on. Further, an actual building that helps other local businesses predicate on walk-in, which this is not. I ask that you carefully consider the impact of approving a project that so significantly deviates from our master plan and the impact this would have to our local economy and the effect this development would have to other area businesses, both now and in the future, that would predicate upon a pedestrian-driven retail model, particularly at a time of commercial growth in our economy that demonstrates that we simply do not need to settle.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, are you done? Thank you. Um, so it, it looks like there's one other person from the public who actually still wanted to have a chance to speak. You can come now.
So do you swear with testimony that you're about to give will be the truth so help you God?
Yes.
Your name and address, please.
Keith Jaffe, two-two-five Raritan Avenue, Highland Park.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm a businessman in the town, a resident in the town for a very long time. I have certain disabilities because of my first auto accidents. I'm concerned with the pedestrian, disabled people in a wheelchair, um, as well as the bicyclists and the children. Between, uh, between third and fourth, before we had the sidewalks done, we had really bad cracks in the cement sidewalks. Having the breaks in the sidewalks that we're going to have so large, that's, that's my big concern, especially with disabled people as well. It's too easy for them to get clipped and get hurt and get killed. I see between constantly, um, where my location is, two-twenty-five Raritan Avenue, got so many cars, so many individuals being distracted on their cell phones. I see it before my eyes. We need much more police presence in this area, as well as, I still say my issue, those cut sidewalks, the disabled people, bicyclists, and distractions. And I really would like the board to take a very close look at that. That area of concession, if we get, God forbid, one person killed because you allowed, and that disabled person, bicyclist, and child couldn't move fast enough. I'm all for businesses, but not at the cost to the disabled people. I really would like the board to really think about that. That's a very, very important detail. We are walking town. I've loved a successful business in this town, working with town residents, and it's a sidewalk type of, um, town, and it's a beautiful town, and I just want the board to take serious look at that, including especially the disabled people.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so is there anyone else from the public? Okay. Um, so I'm going to move on to Mr. Liston. Okay, so Mr. Liston, at this time, we understand you have, uh,
I have an expert.
An expert that you'd like to present?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward.
Yes, I'd like to. Mr. Liston, if you'd be kind enough to identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Ed Liston Jr., Tom River, New Jersey. I'm an attorney, and I represent Narmal Singh, who is an objector to this application.
Thank you.
Uh, I am going to present Richard O. Venino tonight as my, uh, expert on real estate titles, and he will be addressing the issue of the restrictive covenant, which the applicant claims prevents it from putting its building closer to Second Avenue. Mr. Venino, would you be sworn, please?
So do you swear with testimony that you're about to give will be the truth so help you God?
I do.
Would you state your name and the location of your professional offices, please, for the record?
Richard O. Venino, V-E-N-I-N-O, Jr., seven hundred Boston Boulevard, Seabird, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
You may have a seat, Mr. Venino. For the record, I have supplied the board and council with a copy of, uh, Mr. Venino's curriculum vitae. I would ask him to briefly put it on the record, starting with his educational background.
I'm a graduate of the University of Vermont with a BA degree. I graduated in nineteen seventy-one. I'm a graduate of the University of South Carolina School of Law, which I graduated in nineteen seventy-six, and in that year was admitted to practice in the state of New Jersey. I have been in the constant practice of law in this state since that time, so approximately thirty-six years. Um, my law practice is, is basically devoted to matters involving real property, uh, title litigation, quiet title suits, quid proempt actions, partitions, boundary line adjudications, and that sort of thing. I have qualified as a title expert and testified in the Superior Court of New Jersey, notably in Passaic County, Somerset County, Middlesex County, Monmouth County, Ocean County, Burlington County, and Atlantic County. My work as a, as an attorney, as I say, is devoted to title litigation. I'm familiar with land titles, and prior to going to law school was actually employed by New Jersey Realty Title, where I learned searching and search techniques, and that is the basis of my curriculum vitae.
Mr., uh, oh, there you are. Mr. Baker, do you have any questions regarding his qualifications?
I have no questions, and I have no objection to him being qualified as an expert on title issues.
Thank you. I have no additional questions either.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Venino, at my request, did you take a look at a restrictive covenant dating back to eighteen sixty-eight, which it is alleged by the applicant, uh, is preventing the applicant from placing a building on the subject property closer than forty feet from the westerly line of South Second Avenue?
I have. It is a, um, recorded document. It's attached to my report.
Okay, now, what, what documents have you looked at in forming your opinion with regard to that restrictive covenant?
I reviewed a, a title search, title report that was prepared by Midstate Abstract Company. It's dated February eleventh, two thousand and eleven, and attached to that report of title is the subject, um, restrict, restriction. I've reviewed a copy of your letter, Mr. Liston, of December eleventh, two thousand and twelve, directed to the Highland Park Planning Board. I've also reviewed a letter of Mr. Kenneth M. Solakian dated December eighteenth, two thousand and twelve, directed to Michael J. Baker, uh, and I've also reviewed a copy of the site plan of Stonefield Engineering. It's dated April eleventh, two thousand and eleven, and subsequently revised on June eighth, two thousand and twelve. I'm sorry, April eleventh, two thousand and twelve is the original date, revised on June eighth, two thousand and twelve, and on July sixth, two thousand and twelve.
All right, and, and based on that research, can you, can you walk us through, uh, the process which you engaged in in order to analyze whether or not this restrictive covenant is in fact enforceable, starting with a restrictive covenant itself?
Well, the covenant itself was created on September twenty-fourth, eighteen sixty-eight, and it was made, it was contained in a deed made by Wesleyan Hiram Benner to a Runyon Pyatt, who was a predecessor entitled to the current owner. I'll generically call it Sunoco. The deed, it's The deed itself provided for the following language. It says, "Provided, however, that no building shall be erected on the lot hereby conveyed within 40 feet from the westerly line of Second Avenue." And that is the restriction that I had been directed to form an opinion as to its continued enforceability.
Okay. Can you tell the board a little bit about what kinds of restrictive covenants there are and how they can be dealt with?
Well, there are basically two types of restrictive covenants. You have covenants that are called real and covenants that are personal. Covenants that are real run with the title to property. Covenants which are personal don't. They are specific to the person who, the restrictive benefit. If this were a personal, to this long dead, the Benners made their conveyance in 1868 is where the restriction is contained. I guess just by way of historical perspective, at the time this restriction was created, Ulysses S. Grant hadn't even been elected as president, and the James Gang was robbing banks, but it's a long time ago. It is in the chain of title, but there are methods by which restrictions can find extinguishment. They can be terminated.
Can you tell us what those methods are?
Well, there are a number of ways. It's in my report, but I will read it briefly. Restrictions may be extinguished in several ways: by release from the party imposing the restriction, by abandonment or change in condition of the neighborhood, by final judgment in an action to quiet title, or in action to determine the validity of restrictive covenants, by release from all parties entitled to enforce the restrictions, by merger of all lots affected, and by the terms of the instrument itself. So, there are a number of different ways by which a restrictive covenant can find extinction.
Okay. Are any of those ways applicable to this particular covenant?
As I've set forth in my report, and I note, obviously, I don't have any specific information or knowledge of what happened in 1868 with respect in this area, but I think we can safely assume that there has been a manifest change in the conditions. Conditions such as this, the restriction, were generally put into deeds because we didn't have any zoning, and it was an early form of zoning. Right now, obviously, we do have zoning, but restrictions can trump zoning, which is why this issue has risen. But there certainly has been a change in condition, I believe, for over 144 years from whence the restriction was initially created, and a change in condition of the neighborhood is one way by which a restriction can be extinguished. Another way would be by way of abandonment. Here, I don't think that anybody has ever enforced the restriction. In fact, it's my understanding that the sighting of the present Sonoco station is within 20 feet of Second Avenue and has been there for quite some time. It seems clear, in my opinion, that nobody having enforced this restriction, that it would be deemed to be abandoned. Furthermore, a restriction can be extinguished by release. In 1915, the neighbors, the owners, I should say, of the properties on Second Avenue between Raritan and Magnolia executed a release in favor of another owner, Kitty Burns. As I say, this occurred in 1915. At that time, Woodrow Wilson was our president, but we have a recorded document, and in the document, it says the following: "It is the belief and contention of the party of the second part heretofore," who was Kitty Burns, "that the said covenant or restriction is now void, and that the said covenant or restriction does not in any way now affect or encumber her tract of land, but doubt has been expressed as to the present effect and the true construction of said covenant or restriction, in which case all of her adjoining neighbors executed this release of the restriction." I would argue that the restrictions were for the benefit of these neighbors, and they acknowledged the fact that there was no further restriction, signed the release, and recorded the release. So, we have now a recorded document from 1915 that says the release is extinguished. There is another factor to consider, and that is, as I've read, an action can be brought in the Superior Court to have the court construe whether or not a restriction is still valid. We have a specific statute, which is NJSA 2A:62-20, which says, "If you have an issue relating to whether a restriction is still valid, you can bring that to the court, and the court can make that determination." To my knowledge, that hasn't been done in this case, and it could have been done. And if it had been done, and the court said yes, in fact, it has been extinguished by any of the methods that I've just mentioned, it's a non-issue. I don't know that that was ever done.
All right. Would it have been, in your view, a better course of action for the owner of the property to seek to have such a judicial determination before coming before this board and claiming variance relief?
It is. Before I came tonight to the meeting, my wife asked me to open up a jar. I figured, hey, she could open it up, but having been married for 44 years, I'm obligated to say, why don't you try to do it rather than take it upon myself? Well, she opened it up. I didn't have to do anything. She didn't have to come to me for any relief. She had the means of the relief in her own hands. She could have undertaken it. I kind of analogize that to what we have here tonight. The owner or the applicant could have sought a judicial declaration that, in fact, the easement had been extinguished years ago, and armed with that, the issue of whether or not they have to comply with a 40-foot setback from a NAD that's required out of a deed made 144 years ago is not something that the board has to consider. So, I would think that in order to determine a hardship, that that should have been done. And there's a final aspect, too, a kind of a catch-all that we have in law, and it's the doctrine, it's an equitable doctrine known as latches, L-A-C-H-E-S. And what that means is, if there's been an unreasonable delay in a party asserting a right, that party loses that right. We refer to it as, if you snooze, you lose. The fact that nothing has been done all this time with respect to anybody taking any action to enforce a 40-foot restriction, to me, at this date demonstrates latches, especially since there is on-site a building which has violated this 40 feet in a significant factor. It's only 20 feet away from Second Avenue. So, that the doctrine of latches, in my opinion, is also applicable to this particular easement and whether or not it's enforceable.
Okay. Based on the work that you undertook, do you have an opinion as to whether the subject setback restriction is presently enforceable?
It is my opinion that, opinion that it is not.
And what is that based on?
It is based upon my examination of the various documents that I've referred to in my report, my analysis that I have just gone through as to the various reasons. In summation, change in condition of the neighborhood, abandonment, release, and latches, and furthermore, the fact that nobody undertook the specific legal action that was available to them to seek a declaration as to the enforceability of the restriction.
Thank you, Mr. Venino. Now, that concludes Mr. Venino's testimony.
Mr. Baker?
Thank you. If you don't mind, can I sit at the table? Thank you. Mr. Venino, you had mentioned Ulysses Grant not being president, or the James Gang still being robbing in the Wild West. But just because the covenant is old or rather ancient does not mean in itself it's unenforceable, does it? The encroachment of the existing building into the 40-foot area also doesn't, in and of itself, make it, the deed restriction disappear, does it?
Doesn't make it disappear, but it doesn't make it enforceable.
Well, let's talk about latches.
Sure.
Latches is a defense, not an affirmative claim, correct?
It is.
So, latches would be asserted by my client if they sought to remove the deed restriction, and someone were to challenge that, correct?
If someone were to challenge it, yes, your client would assert that defense.
Correct, but latches in and of itself does not make the deed restriction go away. You had mentioned that, in your opinion, from a land use standpoint, and I note that you weren't qualified as a land use attorney, but as a land use standpoint, that you thought a applicant would have to take all actions to remove a deed restriction before seeking relief. Is that what you testified to?
My testimony was to the effect that, in order to demonstrate hardship, that it would be a reasonable step to take, to provide to the board testimony that, in fact, we have to live with 40 feet.
I note in your expert opinion, you had mentioned that, you cited nothing from the municipal land use law or case law that upholds that position. Can you cite something from municipal land use, or is it just your opinion?
Well, any time, from my general knowledge of land use, that an application for a C variance is made, one of the determinants as to whether or not relief should be granted is whether or not there is a hardship, in which case, I mean, I'm not prepared, I could have prepared if you wanted, land use cases, but my report is directed to property law. But it's always been my understanding that a hardship would be required to be demonstrated in order to receive some relief from the terms of the zoning ordinance.
You know of nothing in the land use law or any case law that says an applicant needs to take the affirmative step of removing a deed restriction in order to justify variance?
I can't say that it's not there. I just can't give you a citation right now.
You do real estate transactions, don't you?
Somewhat.
When you do a real estate transaction, you order title work, don't you?
Yes, as a general rule.
And you order that for the purpose of getting a title search, correct?
Yes.
And for the purpose of getting title insurance?
Perhaps, yes.
How often do you recommend your clients close title on a property without title insurance?
My practice is a lot more diverse than the normal closing, so I would say that in many cases, we do not get title insurance. But as a practical matter, if I'm representing a retail client who's buying a house, let's say, I would counsel getting title insurance, and certainly mortgage companies would require a title policy, insurance in reach.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Can the board ask?
Sure, absolutely.
Does the board have questions for Mr. Venino at this time?
Could our questions be of Mr. Baker, or is that part of your rebuttal? Mr. Kluger, I have a title witness coming up next.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Hopefully, a, of Mr. Venino?
Sure.
Yes.
Sure, just, you've made it the stipulation, one question.
I've never known any attorney that has asked one question.
I rest my case.
I'll try. Mr. Venino, in your experience, generally speaking, do property owners who are looking to purchase and do something with the property, do they want use restrictions to be in place, or do they want properties that are free of use restrictions?
Free of restrictions, generally, because the restriction infringes upon the free utilization of the property. It inhibits your ability to use the property the way you see fit. Somebody else would say, well, you can use it, but you can't use it, say, by building within 40 feet of the road.
Right, and just by the nature of the document that's at issue, being called a restrictive covenant, obviously, it connotes that it does provide restrictions to the property in terms of, you know, what can or cannot be done there, or in terms of, you know, how a project could be cited there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then, can you?
That's very good. I'm just kidding. It's a continuation.
Yeah, but I'm not.
This is a subpart. And really, my last question then is this, can you think of any reason why the applicant would not have taken the measures that you opined before this board today in terms of settling the question, whether or not this restriction is really valid and enforceable?
I would only be speculating, but it's certainly a prudent course to take to, you know, have a judicial declaration that, in fact, it is not an impediment to the title.
Okay, and in your opinion, and based on your experience, do you think that that kind of an action before a court would be successful, based on your testimony?
Based upon my testimony and my conclusions that are in my report, I would say a question would that really be given.
Okay, thank you.
I had one, just a quick question, Mr. Liston, procedurally, just for my notes. Who do you represent?
Narmal Singh.
Okay, and Mr. Singh's or Mrs. Singh's relationship to this application?
He's an objector.
But is he a budding property owner?
No, he's not a budding property.
Okay, is he a resident?
He is a resident of, I believe, Piscataway, and he is a franchisee of a business in town.
Which is what?
The Raceway Gas Station.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Baker? So, now, we're still in our public portion of our meeting.
Yeah, you should.
Mr. Baker, okay, so, at this time, Mr. Baker, I do just want to close the public portion of our meeting.
So, do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God? Would you state your name and the location of your professional offices, please, for the record?
My name is Kenneth M. Solakian. Office is at 207 Hooper Avenue, Tom's River, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, you spelled that.
Can you spell your last name?
S-O-L-A-K-I-A-N.
Thank you.
Mr. Solakian, could you give the board the benefit of what you do for a living?
I work for a title insurance company. I've been employed in the title insurance industry for 46 years.
And in a perfect example of six degrees of separation, do you know Mr. Liston?
I do. Mr. Liston's a tenant in my building.
And you know Mr. Venino?
I do. Mr. Venino's title work.
And you respect both of them?
Absolutely.
And they use you and your title company for their real estate transactions?
They do.
Exclusively, I might add.
As a representative of a title company, explain to the board what it is you do for a living.
Well, we're retained by usually attorneys, sometimes builders or other people, to do research on a piece of property, to ascertain who owns it, and then determine whether or not we can provide title insurance.
And that involves reviewing what sort of documents?
Deeds, mortgages, going back in time to a certain point to find out if there are restrictive covenants or any easements on the property, any mortgages, things of that nature.
I'll offer, Mr. Solakian, as an expert on title issues.
Mr. Liston?
I just would like to, I don't mean this in any disrespect, I just, I don't know what its educational background is.
My educational background is just being in the title industry.
Okay, fine.
I'm a licensed title person.
That's really what I was getting at, licensure.
I have license.
Okay, fine, no objection.
You're joined.
Thank you, Ken. Did you review, did you do the titles search on the property in question?
I did.
And in doing that title search, did you find a deed restriction on the property dating from 1868?
Yes, I did.
And did you discuss that with the client and bring it to the client's attention?
Yes, we provided a title report, I believe, back in 2011, where we noted that the property had a deed restriction on it, and based on that, we did some investigative work to determine whether or not the restriction was released. It appears that this property was part of a tract owned by the two Benner brothers, Hiram and Wesley, who owned 13 acres of property, which covered a good portion of Highland Park, and they divided the property into two areas. Hiram took one part, which was west of Second, and Wesley took the part east of Second west of Second, and Wesley took the part east of Second Avenue. In doing the title work, when we find the deeds out of Benner, we did find this restrictive covenant, it appears that it not only runs with this property, but other properties in the town have the same 40-foot setback, and the property immediately below us also has the same restrictive covenant. The people that, at one point in time, owned the property south of us, did in fact give that release, and that release is the question of, I assume, why we are here, I believe that the people that gave the release, basically, probably did not have a right to do that, based on the way the document was worded. The concept would be under equitable servitude, wherein restrictive covenants are sometimes to the benefit and sometimes to the detriment, and I know that question was brought up a few minutes ago. Some people, and my personal home included, we favor the restrictive covenants, because we want people to build a certain distance back from the street, we want them to have a certain square footage or a certain concept that's uniform to the development. Although I can't say this, I believe that when the Benners did put the restrictive covenant in, they wanted some uniformity as to where the houses would be, and again, we can't say who the beneficial person was, but we believe it was for the church across the street that they wanted the homes to be 40 feet back, so it's only speculative in nature, but everything that we've done, and we've done exhaustive genealogical research on the Benners to try to determine if they've released it, we did find the one release, but to search every property in Highland Park to find out who the current owners are, to see if they could release their equitable interest in this, would be an exhaustive process.
So, 40-foot setback was very common in this area, you've testified?
Yes.
And did you do any checking to see if the other structures up south Second Avenue still abide by the 40-foot setback?
I didn't personally go out there, for whatever it is worth, I scaled off of Google Earth, and it appears the properties are all 40 feet back from the road, including the strip mall and the homes south of this property.
And I will have testimony later regarding to that as well. So let me get this straight, the release that Venino and Mr. Liston were speaking of was not given by the original party who put the restriction on the Sunoco property, correct?
No, and the reason being, there were two separate conveyances, at least for these two properties that are in discussion right now. The property that is along Raritan Avenue and runs 150 feet deep was the restrictive covenant that is in the title report. The property that is below that is in another conveyance from Mr. Benner. What had happened was, at the time, I believe it was 1912, and I can give you the exact dates or so, Kitty Burns, who owned the corner lot, also owned the next lot in on Raritan Avenue, she had the home 50 feet off of Raritan Avenue, she bought the vacant lot on the corner. Apparently, she realized that there was a restrictive covenant, and she went to the neighbors and had an attorney prepare a document, and they signed a release. Subsequently, or simultaneously, because there's a little problem with the date, she sold the property first to someone else, but then sold it to Sun Oil, and we assumed that that's the reason why the release was given, because there was a contract to Sun Oil to sell the property.
So it wasn't from the person who originally put the restrictive covenant on the property?
Correct, that would be Benner.
And it wasn't by someone who then owned the property?
That would be correct, it's from the adjoining owner.
So it was from the adjoining owner, and as a result of that, and all of your other research, do you have an opinion as to the enforceability of the deed restriction?
Well, enforceability is really out of my area, I can only speak to title insurance, and, you know, attorneys can give opinions, and a judge can make an adjudication as to whether or not it's valid. My position in this whole thing is whether or not I can provide title insurance, whether it be for $5 or $5 million, and at this point, it's impossible for me to give free and clear title over that restriction at this point in time.
So you and your company couldn't give free and clear title, and you and your company wouldn't be able to issue the title insurance that Mr. Venino said he usually likes to get, and that banks require you to get?
At this time, yes.
And I know you had spoken to your underwriting counsel about this.
Objection, hearsay.
Fair objection.
Why would you not write title insurance for this, is there cost, litigation, what are the concerns?
Well, I can't say definitively whether or not it's enforceable, it's beyond the scope of my position, I can say whether or not I'd insure it. To insure this property, under several methods that Mr. Venino mentioned, one of them would be a court action. To do that, we would have to, again, search a good portion of Highland Park, find everybody that was a conveyance from Mr. Benner, and have them served under the doctrine of equitable servitude, and I'm very familiar with that, because I went through that with my development.
So?
We had to notice everybody in the development, and I've done this for other attorneys through the years.
So it can become a very large, complex, and costly litigation?
Exhaustive, we've already spent well over a month of time just doing what we did.
Can I ask a question, just for a point of clarification, are you saying that this exhaustive process would be in relationship to going to court for a court decision to lift the restriction?
I'm saying to do the title.
Or are these two separate things, to do the title work without the court lifting the restriction, to do the title work the way you would typically do it, without the?
Well, I would do, my part in this would be to do the title work, and to come up with whoever was a conveyancy of Benner.
So to do your work would be incredibly exhaustive, you're not talking about that work in relationship to having the courts lift the?
No, his work would have to be done first, before you could get to court.
Sorry, continue.
I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Liston?
Yes, I just have a couple of questions, Mr. Solakian, the type of action that you're talking about, which would need this exhaustive title work, or title, title work, would be a quiet title action, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, would that also be necessary for an action to determine the validity of the restrictive covenant, based on its enforcement or non-enforcement over the years?
You might have to rephrase that question again.
Would it be, would you have to do the same amount of title work to bring an action under NJSA 2A 62-20 to determine the validity of the restrictive covenant, based on whether it's ever been enforced, whether it's ever been violated, changes in the neighborhood, and all the other aspects of extinguishment that Mr. Venino talked about?
That would require a legal opinion, and I'm not qualified to answer that.
Okay, all right. Did you talk to your client about the fact that he could have a lot more usability of this parcel of property if he were to undertake such an action?
No.
Did he ask you about it?
We discussed the amount of time that I put in on this, and how much further I would have to do work to determine the name of all the owners, and after approximately a month's worth of research time, we just left it the way it was.
Okay, so what he basically said to you was, I don't want to spend any more money on this old thing?
We would, this would probably be close to six to eight months of work for me. It would be.
You wouldn't turn that away, of course.
I wouldn't turn it away, it would be extremely expensive.
Okay.
And there'd be literally hundreds of people in town that would have to be served.
Okay, but that would be on the quiet title action, you're not sure if that same amount of work would have to be done if you were bringing a declaratory judgment action to have it declared invalid or extinguished, based on latches, based on abandonment, or based on change in neighborhood scheme?
I understand your question, but I'm not qualified to answer it.
Okay, all right. So, were you aware of the fact that your client was wanting to design this project in a specific way?
In all honesty, not until you came to my office and.
And told you about it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, just so we can put the entire covenant on the record, and this comes from your company, and it has the quote of the entire restrictive covenant, not just the 40-foot setback.
Yes.
I'd ask you to read that into the record.
Provided, however, that no building shall be erected on the lot hereby conveyed within 40 feet from the westerly line of Second Avenue, nor any stable within 100 feet of said line of the avenue, and provided further that there shall not at any time hereafter be erected or kept on said lot hereby conveyed any slaughterhouse, foundry, smith shop, forge, brewery, distillery, or any place or building whereat or wherein any spiritus liquors or ale or beer shall or may at any time be sold or kept for sale.
That was language that comes from 144 years ago, is that right?
Yes.
And you don't see restrictive covenants in the modern age that look anything like that, do you?
No, as far as these slaughterhouses and?
Right.
No, as far as setbacks, obviously.
Okay, now, do you know how long the Sun Oil Company has maintained a building on this property in direct violation of that restrictive covenant?
I know when they first came into title, as far as when they constructed the building,
Is it fair to say that if they were, they then were and still are the Sun Oil Company, they bought the, they bought the property to build a gas station?
Yes.
And they bought the property back in the 50s, is that correct?
No, they bought it in the 1920s.
They bought it in the 1920s?
They bought it at the simultaneous time that Kitty Burns got the release.
Oh, okay, all right, and then it was later they added the other piece on Raritan Avenue, that was the, I believe?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so it's possible that that building, which is on the Kitty Burns property, or the part of it that is on the Kitty Burns property, was in fact, and has been on that property since the 1920s?
Very possible.
Okay, did you check the docket in Middlesex County to see whether anybody ever brought an action to try to enforce the restrictive covenant?
No.
Would you have picked that up in your title search?
Yes.
And you didn't?
Correct.
So it's fair to say that nobody ever tried to enforce the restriction from the 1920s forward?
Yes.
Thank you, no further questions.
Anything further, Mr. Baker?
Just, I wanted to be sure it was clear, because I know we all chuckled at the places selling spiritus liquors, but I do want to point out that there's a brewery in New Brunswick still.
It's current.
Thank God. Yes. But I think what might not have been picked up by the board or the public is that, can deed restrictions with language such as a setback of 40 feet from a sideline of the road, is still very common for you to see?
Absolutely. No.
Mr. Liston asked you about two different kinds of potential lawsuits, one with regard to the validity of the deed restriction, and one that's a quiet title action, you couldn't give your opinion as to how much work would be involved in an action to determine the validity of the deed restriction, but you did with regard to that heavy effort on the quiet title action. I just have a question for you, would your company insure title to this property without a quiet title action?
No.
I'd just like to ask a follow-up question, so that, what you're saying is, if a court proceeded under the other statute, and there was a declaratory judgment, that this covenant has been extinguished, based on all of the other, all of the other criteria that Mr. Venino put on the record, you still wouldn't insure it?
No, we had a court order, and the proper defendants were noticed in that action?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Thank you, I just have one matter of housekeeping, Madam Chair, I'd like to mark the report of Richard O. Venino Jr. as an exhibit, I've provided it to the board and to counsel.
Do you have an objection?
We have his testimony.
So you have an objection?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, all of the other reports have been put into the record and have been marked in evidence, I think it would be unfair not to allow me to mark my expert report, where the applicant's attorney marked every one of his expert reports.
And you've been sitting here the entire time and never made an objection, I think the objection's reasonable, and therefore, I think it should not be admitted.
And thank you, and just to add on to something Ed had said at the beginning, I didn't have that tone, Dave, I just got it there.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
I got a question, wait. So, I believe you did not answer, I'm sorry, Mr. Liston's question about, from a legal perspective, because you're not an attorney, but Mr. Baker, I guess I will ask you why you did not try to go to court to try to have this removed, or why did your client not try to go to court to have the deed extinguished?
Because of the extraordinary cost involved, and the many months of effort that it would take to do that, because it's still not a sure thing, when you go to court, you could spend all that money, take the effort, and still not have the deed restriction removed. And also, and I do not want this to come out the wrong way, or to sound the wrong way, there's no requirement under land use law for us to go to that, to those ends to do that.
Agreed, so I'm not going to respond to it. But, so even though by removing the deed restriction, you could have, would have provided your applicant with additional usable, developable property, it may have allowed you to better meet the requirements of our plan, you still chose, in a way, to sit on your hands and say, we're not going to move, and to try to remove the restriction?
That's one way of characterizing. I would say that every development application has its economics, this is already a very difficult site economically, with the two-story requirement, the smaller building, and all the other requirements that you rightly are imposing on it, and the additional cost and uncertainty and delay associated with taking the route of litigation was what could potentially make the project not viable, it's on the edge as it is now.
So, Mr. Baker, I imagine you represent many other clients with land use issues?
I wasn't going to object, because it was a board member's question, but at this point, Mr. Baker is starting to testify, if he wants to include these comments in a summation, I have no objection to that, but if he's going to continue to testify about economics and other things, then I think he ought to be sworn in, he ought to be made a witness.
I do agree that it's getting close to him testifying, generally speaking, I don't think that attorneys testify, unless they're under oath.
Right, and I don't disagree, and then my follow-up question will be now, and when you put on your other rebuttal testimony about, in response to the objectors, that kind of response should come from the applicant, who interestingly, we have not heard from this entire application, as far as, going back over my notes over the last six months, who is the actual applicant here, we've heard from 7-Eleven, but they're not the applicant?
Continental Global Properties.
Okay, and who represents Continental Global?
Susan.
Okay, right, so if there are questions about those types of issues, I think we'd like to hear from, from the applicant, as opposed to from you or from the experts.
I'll just answer questions.
Okay, that's fine.
So what you're saying is, we should not have any more further board questions, unless they're for?
Well, unless they're for the witness.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, so at this time, do we have any questions for Mr. Solakian? Okay, seeing none?
If there are no questions, there are witnesses from the public?
So shall we?
Seeing none?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken.
So, Mr. Baker will now move to rebuttal, is that?
Well, I thought that there was another witness, maybe I'm wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two more witnesses, that's.
Two more rebuttal.
I see. Oh, right.
Two more witnesses. No, this is rebuttal testimony.
So you said you wanted to tell them all, and you said, no, it's two more witnesses, but that last witness, so your last witness was?
Was rebuttal testimony.
These are all rebuttal witnesses.
Okay, thank you.
Other than Mr. Solakian, you've seen everybody.
So, I will, you understand you remain under oath?
I do, yes.
And if you'd be kind enough just to restate your name and address, please, if you would.
Certainly, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Charles Olivo, O-L-I, V as in Victor O., I'm the owner of Stonefield Engineering and Design.
Thank you.
Charles, just a matter of time management, Chair, I understand 10 o'clock is our pumpkin hour tonight, so. I understand ten o'clock is our pumpkin hour tonight, so we'll try to get things in both witnesses in before then. Chuck, at the last couple of meetings, the objectors had put on some testimony with regard to a couple of different proposals that they thought might work, A and B, I think they were referred to as, and I know there were also concerns and testimony from the public with regard to the safety of the intersection. Can you address those comments from the objectors' witnesses and also from the public?
Certainly. As part of the ongoing proceedings, the last two hearings, we had the opportunity to review the, what I would refer to as, concept preliminary plans. I believe the objectors' experts referred to them as the same concept plans or schematic plans, and we've also had the opportunity, I've been here both nights, to listen to the testimony as well. So, with regard to the review of those plans, certainly this Board has put the engineering documents that our firm has prepared under a level of high scrutiny, no different than any other Board that I've been in front of. Certainly, a conceptual sketch plan is very different from an engineered plan, so our ability to review the details of those plans are, quite frankly, very limited, because grading, drainage, stormwater management, landscaping, et cetera, all of those items have not been prepared as part of those plans. In addition to that, there was no traffic impact analysis, no traffic study or counts that were conducted. With regard to the details of those plans and the functionality of the site, based on those conceptual sketches that have been prepared, we have reviewed the plans in that regard, and what I would submit to the Board is that there are a number of elements that we feel are lacking, and certainly, what we have done as part of coming to this hearing is review those concept plans from a more engineered eye, certainly a more practical and utilitarian eye, to understand if those plans could function. So, with regard to the first element that I'll state is loading and deliveries. There has been a significant amount of testimony put on by myself and certainly Mr. Byer of our firm with regard to the delivery route patterns of a WB-50 tractor-trailer on this site. Our firm has reviewed this conceptual sketch with regard to that and prepared an exhibit that I'd like to mark.
I believe that we are up to A-21.
I believe you are correct.
Mr. Olivo, if you would be kind enough to identify, please, and if there's a date on it, give us the date.
Certainly. This plan is entitled Vehicle Turning Plan WB-50, and the date of the plan is January fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Thank you.
Essentially, what this plan is, is an aerial overlay with the schematic plan that has been prepared for the objectors' case, which notes the forty-foot deed restriction that's located at the corner. There are two windows shown with Raritan Avenue and South Second Avenue along the middle of the page. North is located to the top of the page with Raritan Avenue, as I mentioned again, kind of bisecting the page here. So, we've shown us two windows with a WB-50 pulling into the site and also pulling out of the site. And in my opinion, and based on a lot of the testimony that has been provided to the Board, one of the key elements of our plan in terms of the design, the actual functionality, pertains to the delivery truck being able to pull onto the site and pull off the site in a safe and effective manner. We have reviewed the ability of a tractor-trailer to pull from Route 27, Raritan Avenue, make a right turn on South Second Avenue, and make a right turn into the site. It can physically make the turn from Raritan Avenue onto South Second, and when it does so, it takes up the entire width of South Second Avenue. So, again, encroaching on what I would refer to as the northbound flow of South Second Avenue completely, approximately thirty feet back from the intersection, then travels over the curb and sidewalk and into the site as proposed, again, on the schematic plan. We have also shown the ability of a WB-50 to make a left turn, again, taking up the majority of the throat of South Second Avenue as it's traveling. Now, what becomes more difficult and challenging is actually getting off this site for a tractor-trailer. The only way physically for a tractor-trailer to travel off this site would be by backing up over a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet, and then continuing via a backing maneuver onto South Second Avenue, and then pulling forward on South Second Avenue. And based on my experience working with retailers and commercial-type tenants, as well as residential developments, I can't say that I've seen a tractor-trailer ever back up this far on a private site and then onto a public roadway network. So, it's my opinion that, in that regard, the site is not functional to accommodate a designed vehicle of this size. Again, I won't reiterate to the Board, but I've provided a lot of testimony with regard to the site design as prepared by our office, for a tractor-trailer to make a right turn in and then travel out via a movement onto South Second Avenue. In addition to that, the schematic plan and the discussion at the last hearing pertaining to parking actually took credit for on-street parking, as it applied to the parking demand of the site. There was no zoning table that was provided, no details with regard to the number of residential units that would be provided above the studio loft space and the retail space, so it's difficult to say exactly how many parking stalls would be required, but based on my estimation, utilizing the zoning ordinance requirement of one per five hundred square feet, it's approximately two per thousand, and one per eight spaces per unit, we're looking at anywhere from sixteen to eighteen parking stalls being required off-street for the development plan proposed on the schematic-concept plan. The schematic-concept plans provided by the objector provide fifteen stalls and eleven stalls respectively, and would not be able to accommodate that parking requirement of eighteen or sixteen parking stalls. In addition to that, something that I want to note with regard to traffic, again, a traffic impact study has not been prepared or provided as part of the objectors' case. And what I want to just reference to the Board is that there is no ability to get on or off this property using the concept plan that has been provided without traveling to South Second Avenue, which means that every vehicle and every motorist that travels onto and off of this site must traverse through the internal intersection of the parking stalls, the L-shaped portion of the property, the dead-end area. I know that a number of the Board members referred to the previous layout of the Duncan site, but the problem that I see as a traffic expert is that everything is constrained within that point. That creates issues of mobility, certainly the efficiency with which motorists can get on and off the property, and get on and off the property safely and effectively. So, with regard to the analysis, there has been no analysis of level of service provided. During the red cycle of South Second Street, it's conceivable that vehicles would queue, then causing vehicles to also queue within the site, blocking all of the parking and maneuverability on-site. There's been no level of service analysis, so it's difficult to say whether or not it would be effective in terms of efficiency from that perspective, but it is my opinion that that type of constrained operation on the site would lead to driver hesitation, it violates certain expectations, and could lead to unsafe mobility patterns on and off the property in this area. There has been a lot of discussion about apron style versus street style, radii...
Yeah, you can give testimony.
At the driveway on Raritan Avenue. This exhibit has been previously marked, and it is marked A-20, and for the Boards and for the Record, this is the site plan document with various areas shown in different highlight, yellow and blue, showing the difference in the textures of the sidewalk, the pavement, the crosswalk striping, all of these elements that are meant to delineate the areas where pedestrians walk across this driveway. That does not exist along an apron-style driveway, where you have the triangular splays and the sidewalk set up high. And many times, in my opinion, what that leads to is a very difficulty in the visual acuity, the visibility of distinguishing between a pedestrian or a bicyclist traveling across that concrete sidewalk area and traveling across an area where there is vehicular mobility. So, in my opinion, based on, again, the Department of Transportation's review of this access point, this has been deemed to be acceptable, and in my opinion, what we are attempting to do is provide a well-delineated area that gives a motorist and a pedestrian and a bicyclist the ability to see and accept what is happening in this area. In addition to that, this corner that is located on South Second Avenue and Raritan Avenue is kept completely clear with regard to sightlines, which is very different when a building is set up against it, or a building is moved into a middle position and there's a mid-block driveway. What that has the effect of doing is actually blocking the visibility and having cars and pedestrians interface in a very short and small amount of distance and time. So, it's my opinion, given the openness of the layout at the corner, and then also the distinguishing patterns of concrete, red detectable warning surfaces, as well as the crosswalk striping, that there is an inherent benefit to the way that is being designed from a safety and accessibility perspective. This plan does nothing to diminish the sidewalk being provided along Raritan Avenue. It embodies the streetscape design that is being requested in the redevelopment plan. There has been a second door added along the frontage on Raritan Avenue. As someone who truly believes in the implementation of complete streets, new urbanism, I ride my bike to work every day. I understand what it's like to not commute in a passenger car. I think the elements that have been provided as part of this plan are in accordance with those. They don't deter walkability, I think they encourage walkability. In addition, something that has been stated that I think, quite frankly, is false with regard to the conceptual plans, and I'll refer back to the exhibit A-22, which is the vehicle turning plan, which shows the schematic plan...
I think that's A-21.
I'm sorry, A-21. Is that the building being shown on these plans is the same. This is not the same building. It is the same square footage, but it has been flipped and rotated to have the long wall of the building along Raritan Avenue. That would essentially be like taking a parking stall, rotating it ninety degrees, and saying it has the same function. Within this shape, within this building, are a number of interior circulation elements and design elements. The way this building is laid out right now, there's a full cooler along Raritan Avenue, providing no opportunity for a door. There are other areas that are, again, being sacrificed as a result. To put this building in the same orientation, to have doors on the corners, or have doors in the locations that have been designed by an architect throughout this entire process with the Board, taking the comments, receiving them, and attempting to be flexible in the design, would preclude the accessibility from South Second Avenue. So, I would submit to the Board that this is not the same building. It is the same shape, it is the same square footage, but by rotating it ninety degrees, this Board has the ability to review the functionality of this site from an interior and exterior perspective. And calling this the same building, I think, is somewhat irresponsible from a design perspective. We have to consider what's happening inside the building as well as outside the building. With regard to grading and drainage, I will state for the Record that, again, the site plan set has been prepared under scrutiny from the Board, the Board's experts. Detailed grading, drainage, wall plans, et cetera, have been provided as part of the submission. What I'll state to the Board, just generally speaking, is that the ADA stalls are now shown behind the studio loft space, which requires a flatter area for a longer period of distance as you travel back from the sidewalk. We've talked at some length about the challenges topographically of this site. I have not seen a grading or drainage plan provided, but it is my opinion, just based on a cursory review, not fully engineering this plan, because I don't believe that it should be taken to that step, based on the testimony I previously provided, that this would require a flatter site for longer and thereby raise the walls that are in the back of the site, picking everything up in the back, creating higher walls, which is something that we would avoid trying to do when we design a site with regard to grading. In addition to that, there has been some discussion about accident data, which I believe was provided in the master plan document, and that data was collected from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and one. Obviously, this corridor has changed to some extent during that time. Our Office had the opportunity to review the last three years of accident data within the direct vicinity of this site. We found that there were fourteen accidents over that three-year period, two involving pedestrians. Both pedestrian accidents, of course, reportable accidents to the Police Department, both pedestrian accidents did not occur across any of the driveways existing along this block, they were jaywalking accidents that occurred along, crossing Raritan Avenue.
With regard to the... Let me just put this in context to try to address some of Mr. Kluber's questions and our Board's concerns. Assume for a second the deed restriction went away, would you design this site without the Raritan Avenue and the Second Avenue driveway access?
No, I think both access points at this corner property are essential to the safe and effective movements onto and off of the property.
So, using just the South Second Avenue is less safe for cars and pedestrians than using both?
Correct. As I mentioned, you can, you create a very constrained internal circulation pattern for motorists, the pedestrians leaving those cars to walk into the site, and essentially, you choke the mobility and accessibility on and off of this property. If this were a square lot, similar to what you see in other portions of the town, you would simply have, if this property were squared off, you would see what you see in many other areas of the town, which is a U-shaped circulation pattern off of the side street. That doesn't exist here, and as a result, by forcing all of the traffic in and out of one access point, puts additional strain on South Second Avenue, the operation of the traffic signal, the queuing that would occur, and then also, as I mentioned, your ability to get in and out of the property.
Okay. And could you just, once again, go over if, again, assume the deed restriction were there, and you move the building to the corner, is that less safe for pedestrians and vehicles because of the site distances? And then also, what other features of the site would you lose, some of the amenities that we worked hard to incorporate?
Yes. My concern with regard to moving the building into that location is blocking sightlines. In creating an interface, you would take the building and move it to the corner, as I mentioned previously, you would likely be limited to a one-way circulation into or out of South Second Avenue, just by sheer virtue of the dimensions that we're working with here. Again, I don't think it's responsible to simply say we can rotate the building and move it into the corner, but even if we were to do that and able to make that circulation work, you're then creating an interface where it's very difficult for drivers and pedestrians to interact to one another. So, I'd have concerns with that, yes.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Does anyone, Terry?
You mentioned that if there was only the one entrance coming in, can you put the back one up? The one entrance from Second into the site would choke mobility. Would you say that that is due to the fact that there's a lot of, with this type of use, a lot of volume and frequency of cars coming in and out of the site as opposed to other types of businesses, or is it any configure, you know, no matter what business was there, you wouldn't want to have this configured?
Well, certainly, the turnover lends itself to the operation of the driveway itself. My concern is that for any retail user within this particular property, I would have concerns with the way this is laid out, even with regard to residential or office space, again, just being hypothetical, the choke point within this site, as a result of the unique properties of the site, the property lines, just simply the shape of it, I would have concerns regardless if this were a convenience store or any type of use on the site, given the layout.
And would, you mentioned the, I don't know what the name of that type of truck, the large delivery?
Tractor trailer.
The tractor-trailer, you know, I'm persuaded that that is not an optimal...
No.
...thing, but not every business needs tractor-trailers to make deliveries on sites this size. But, didn't we discuss that Raritan Avenue, loading and unloading from there was the best option anyway? So, I can't, and granted, that was now how many meetings ago we had that conversation, but, so, that was what came to mind when you were presenting that.
Well, I think we all agreed, and I certainly did, that loading and unloading off Raritan Avenue happens every day and is desirable here. However, the way in which we've designed this site, because there are no loading zones per se on Raritan Avenue, and there's no way to preserve a stall for delivery, we have had to be, and certainly at the behest of the engineer and the planner for the town, we've had to look at the ability of this site to accept a tractor-trailer, and then also for that tractor-trailer to leave the property in a safe and effective manner. So, we've had to consider both, because we can't say...
But you did provide testimony that your preference would be, I mean, you left us with the impression that you want to...
Yes, certainly.
...load and unload from Raritan Avenue, taking those empty spots on off times of the day.
Absolutely. And I also spoke with the Police Department about trying to understand if there was a way we could preserve those stalls, but because we can't, then we have to, in the rare occasion that perhaps we would have to load on the property, which may happen more frequently than we would like, we have to have the ability to functionally accept a tractor-trailer onto this property and then off of the site in a safe and effective manner, and that's what we've done.
Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Olivo?
Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Leva?
Yeah, Mr. Leva, I have one. At one point in your testimony in prior meeting, you stated that the tractor trailer could safely and effectively make the left out of the parking lot and still make the light and make the turn. And yet you say today that it takes up most, if not all, of the throat on Second Avenue. So if the tractor trailer, for whatever reason, a car in front of it, cannot make that turn, would he be blocking Second Avenue?
Well, not necessarily. As I mentioned, there's a difference in taking up the entire width of South Second Avenue and traversing out of the site to make the turn. In my experience, watching either bus routes where you're in downtown areas, or tractor trailers leaving or exiting sites, is that they won't pull out of the site until they have the ability to do so in a safe and effective manner. So here, with the one to two deliveries that we would propose to have per week with this type of tractor trailer, they simply flag on the people that are either waiting in the area that they need to turn onto, or people make arrangements to allow for that tractor trailer to go. So based on the green time, based on the visibility of the traffic signal and the signal heads, I just don't think that that would be a situation that the tractor trailer driver would be running into.
Now, the driveway is twenty-four feet wide.
Difficult to say. I don't know that the schematic plan, for the concept plan?
No, for your plan.
Oh, for our plan. Yes, I believe we're approximately twenty-four feet wide.
And then from essentially the center of that radius to the intersection is another thirty-five to forty?
To the center of the intersection?
Well, I mean, roughly speaking, so this fifty-foot trailer has to... Say again, Kim?
You're talking about the length of that back strip?
No, I'm talking about the width of the driveway.
Yeah.
This tractor trailer has to make this turn while allowing cars in front of it to go first and still have time to make the light.
Oh, I see.
So I'm trying to understand the distance from roughly where he's going to begin his turn to the light.
It's about fifty-five feet.
Fifty-five feet, okay.
The stop bar, from the stop bar to the point of exiting the driveway, pulling forward. Schematic plan, truck absolutely has to back out of the site. Or back into the site, which I haven't even looked at because that would be a lot worse.
Well, yeah, I don't want to adjust that. I understand that. I understand that piece of it. So it just seems to me that he would have, the road on Second would have to be empty as the light turns, and he would have to make that entire turn, almost taking up the entire length between the exiting of the parking lot and the light is fifty-five feet. He's fifty feet in length.
And more than likely, he would encroach slightly on the stop bar.
Right.
And during the off-peak hours, one to two times a week, he would make that turn and encroach into that area slightly. Yes, that's exactly what he would do.
And are you saying he would also encroach on the crosswalk that crosses pedestrians across
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. One of the points that I will make is the volume on South Second Avenue, even during the peak times, which I've been out there, conducted counts and observations, typically have about two to three vehicles that queue during the peak. So looking into the evening hours or after essentially the rush dies down, then you're looking at very few. In fact, a lot of times that phase is skipped and time is given to Raritan Avenue. So the ability for that vehicle to turn out onto South Second and the stacking length, more than likely that area is going to be empty during those off-peak times. One of the other things that I'll just mention briefly is, and I want to reiterate, is that the driveway proposed on Raritan is proposed to be right in, right out. We've heard a lot of discussion about Raceway, Dunkin' Donuts, other areas next to traffic signals. There are no restrictions on their movements. The Raceway has, may have excess of two driveways that have no restrictions on their movements into and out of the site. What happens as a result of that is, any left-turning vehicle is now impeding the flow of traffic and progression of traffic on Raritan. So we've really tried to work very closely with the department, with the borough, on the accessibility and what I would refer to as the access management of the site, to allow for these types of patterns for both motorists, create pedestrian areas that are well, very visible and well delineated, and really balance all of the things that we've talked about. The building, the interior, the exterior, the access, all of those things are very important consideration.
Thank you.
So when your truck pulls out, this conversation you just had with Mr. Linares, does it block the cars heading south on South Second? You know, you're saying it's fifty-five foot?
During the turn.
Fifty-five foot of length, you have fifty...
During the turn.
But he's going to be able to get the whole truck, or she is going to be able to get the whole truck in their lane queued up at the light?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Leva, just a quick question. Taking into account your exhibit there, A twenty, you've obviously heard a great deal of concerns with regard to the curb cut.
Yes.
And I don't know if you heard, but there was a young lady today who indicated a reduction in the width of the curb cut by possibly coming with an alternative plan where it would be a right turn in only, and then the exit would be on South Second. What is the possibility of that being incorporated into the plan?
Well, again, I would have concerns about creating essentially something that I believe would violate driver expectation. To only have a right in would essentially force the stalls that are directly in front of the store to be angled. If you kept them as ninety, my concern would be, typically you see ninety-degree stalls, you anticipate a two-way aisle. So you would likely lose stalls in this area, and you would likely have to do them only in one angled direction as you come off, and just kind of designing as we go here. You would also, as you're coming out of the site, every exiting movement, every exiting vehicle for this project would now have to leave on South Second Avenue. I think there's an inherent benefit, and I believe that our analysis has shown that there's an inherent benefit in being able to have two egress points to and from essentially exiting this site. It would change the layout, certainly, with regard to the ability to make only the one-way pattern, having angled stalls in what we would do. It would be a concern to me to constrain all the exiting movements out to South Second Avenue and then reconfiguring this area so it wouldn't be confusing to drivers that are again trying to either perceive what's happening here, can they park here, can they not park here, or do they simply have to exit the site? I think it creates driver confusion on the site. It's not something I would recommend.
Thank you.
But you, with these angled spots, I mean, a couple of points. One is, you actually are providing more parking than is required, so you actually could give up a spot, still meet your requirement, and create angled parking. And the other thing is, I'm not completely sold on the, you're not saying that has to be a one-way. You're just saying the entrance into the parking lot is one-way, and once you're in the parking lot, potentially you could maneuver, you know? In other words, you would be able to pull right into a ninety-degree spot and pull out and look for another spot?
The most important stalls, obviously, for any retailer are the ones that are fronting on the building. So these stalls that are located in the area that are proposed are obviously very vital stalls for the operation of the retailer, number one. Number two, the angled stalls, I can't say whether it would be just one stall loss. I really, quite frankly, don't know. More than likely, you would keep the two-way circulation pattern in the back of the site, but this whole area of the site, and by this I'm referring to the area that is fronting on the building in the easterly section of the site, would become only a one-way pattern to the south. In addition to that, if you were to put stalls on the easterly side of that, my concern would be now all of your pedestrians that are parking are crossing into the influx of traffic that are coming into the site. So I have concerns. I haven't had the opportunity to review it. I think the majority, as a result of studying many retailers along state routes, this is a state highway, the predominance in traffic is expected during the peak hours to be that right-in, right-out movement. To push that movement to a left turn and then a right at the traffic signal, I think is constraining flow in a manner that is simply not necessary.
But that egress onto Raritan is going to be constraining anyway because it's so close to the corner, like I think you gave testimony, you're only going to get one car, you know, queued at that light anyway. So it's not like you're sort of giving this big aisle way where people can queue up and then move through that intersection. There's actually going to be more...
During the red cycle, you're right. While this is red, and obviously most of the green time is given to Raritan during the cycle, but while Raritan Avenue is red, you essentially with one courtesy gap, when a driver lets you on exiting the site, you would pull in and have the ability. But during the green, which is the predominance of the signal cycle, this is a very important point of egress for the site. It is the state highway access to the site. The right-in, right-out is typically the most prolific movement for a convenience store retailer, so I think it's
On a highway.
On a state highway.
Thank you.
I have a question. Before I forget, so my comments are going to probably focus on a couple of your points. We talked about a choke point, and you stated constraining the flow within the site is unnecessary. So I'll just talk about those. What is the choke point? Can you quantify how many spaces gets you to that choke point? Okay, because we've heard a lot of testimony, testimony, comments from the public, concern from the board, about the curb cut on Raritan Avenue. So clearly, there's a lot of people who would like that curb cut to go away. And if one of your constraints is that there's a choke point, what is that choke point? Because as the chair just said, you have more parking than what you need. And I think I've said early on, you're one of the first applicants who's come before us proposing more parking than what's required under our ordinance. And then there was testimony from the objectors that you would gain spots along Raritan Avenue. There are other places within a block and a half of the site where people could park and don't necessarily have to park on the site just to go to your store. So my question is, what is that choke point that you see, and how many spaces do you think could work within the site if we only had the entrance on South Second? And as far as staying that constraining the flow is unnecessary, I think you have to balance that with a lot of the safety issues that have been brought up. You may feel it's unnecessary from a technical planning perspective, but obviously, you know, we're dealing with, you know, personal safety, and I think that's something that use of the word unnecessary really just doesn't fit here.
Well, I'll try to remember all of the questions. I think there were a few in there. But the first pertaining to the choke point, I'm not referring to a threshold or a number. What I'm referring to is simply the physical geometry of this site. There is one internal intersection where every single vehicle that comes onto and off of this property essentially must travel through, and that is interior of the site, a fair distance, perhaps seventy-five to a hundred feet within the site itself, where parking maneuvers, pulling out of the site into the site, someone who comes into the project realizes there's no parking in the back has to come through the same point. With regard to unnecessary, it's unnecessary because you can have access on Raritan Avenue. Physically, you can build it. Physically, it can accommodate the design vehicle that we're proposing. So from a design perspective, I believe creating that choke point centrally, as shown on the schematic plan, quite frankly, is unnecessary. So when I say choke point, I'm referring essentially to the difference between bringing all of the vehicles into one constrained point and having flexibility in the mobility of vehicles to come in and off of the site. Someone could travel into the site, park in one of the parking stalls, back up and leave onto Raritan Avenue, and never interact with someone who's parked in the very rear of the property. So the point that I'm referring to is just a physical point in time. It's not necessarily...
Okay, so I'll rephrase the question, and to the applicant as well as to you, is, can you design a site with less parking spaces that will work from a traffic perspective?
Well, it's my...
Without the curb cut on Raritan Avenue?
No.
Nope? Absolutely not?
We've been here for many hearings.
I understand. I understand.
We've reviewed schematic plans, which I believe do not function with regard to what this site needs to be accept, needs to be able to accept in and out of this property and given the retailer that's going to come here. So it is my opinion, based on the review of an alternate schematic plan, that I don't believe functions, that I don't believe places the building properly, quite frankly, from an interior design perspective, that no, we cannot without having the access on Raritan Avenue.
Right, so I'm not asking you to move the building. I'm saying where the building is right now, if it stays right there. And if you eliminated four spots, five spots, would you be able to, and I'm not talking about the tractor trailer, let's leave the tractor trailer issue out, because as Terry said, from a practical perspective, the loading/unloading is going to happen on Raritan Avenue. So let's leave the tractor trailer off the table for now. But just in terms of vehicular traffic, could you design that lot with, I said, four spots less, five spots, and be able to be comfortable with the movement just off of South Second?
Well, with all due respect, I can't leave the tractor trailer out. We do not have a designated voting zone on either of the street frontages. As an engineer designing this site for the retailer, and based on the comments that we receive from the board's experts, this site needs to be able to receive a tractor trailer. Just from my engineering perspective, that has to be something that this site can accommodate, number one. Number two, with regard to the accessibility, creating, I suppose what we're talking about is hypothetically creating another dead-end area within the site with no access to Raritan Avenue, leaving the building where it is. I don't believe that you can create a site that will operate effectively and safely by cutting off the access to Raritan Avenue, for the same reasons which I previously mentioned, which are creating one point of access, one point of constrained flow onto and off of this property. I don't think it's good design. I don't think it's effective design.
Okay.
Is there anyone else from the board who has a question for...
This is following up on Alan's question about the circulation of the parking. Going back to the schematic...
I'm going to ask you to speak up, Megan.
Okay, going back to the schematic. It just, it struck me, I think it was Mr. Nolan that mentioned the site adjacent to the property in question. No... Yes, that one. So I think Mr. Nolan identified the fact that that, you know, was going to be developed, and now it's not going to be developed. If Seven-Eleven were able to acquire that property and more parking behind that, it looks like it would be feasible to create more circulation. I know you're not going to be able to answer this definitively, but to kind of alleviate the, what are you calling it, the choke point or the bottleneck? And did you, did you look at that, or do you know if the applicant thought about that?
Well, I've been to Bora to review the plans for that site, and that site has access through, I think it's referred to as the unnamed right-of-way that travels, traverses along the back, essentially fronting or traveling parallel to Raritan Avenue behind the structures that are there. That is a huge if. If Seven-Eleven or the developer were able to purchase a large property. But playing out the hypothetical situation, if they were to have more land, certainly there's more amenities, whether it be parking, circulation, but I don't know. I haven't designed it. It's another completely different property that's in question, and I don't know the status of the...
But that would alleviate the difficulties of the site as it is now?
Well, not with regard to its accessibility from South Second Avenue, though. The difficulty with, at South Second Avenue is really by virtue...
For the tractor trailer, you mean, or I'm...
No, I just mean in general. If the site allowed for, similar to what you have in the right aid, which is where you have access that loops around and then pushes you further away from the intersection itself, that would involve actually squaring off the property. To have more land in the area here may provide more parking, but still creates the same issue of internal conflict and choke at the middle point where you're coming off South Second Avenue. So I know we're playing out this hypothetical situation. I haven't had a chance to review it from an engineering perspective. I don't know that it alleviates the problems that we're talking about right now.
Okay.
Without having the ability to do that, so.
So you'd have to study it further, and the applicant did not ask you to study it further?
Well, simply because that property has never been part of this application for development.
Okay. My second question has to do with the building footprint that you were talking about.
Yes.
When you, when you look at site development, do you look at one layout only for the site, or do you go into it with an open mind and kind of design the site for the conditions that are there?
Well...
And the access points that are there?
As I mentioned, I'm a proponent of complete streets, new urbanism. I love this downtown. As I spoke about it at the first hearing, I think there's some excellent features of streetscape and design within the borough. I try to keep as open a mind as possible when it comes to design. But as an engineer, we start with concept plans and we end with engineered documents.
Right.
And in order to receive approval from the board, we need to have engineered documents.
Right, okay, so I think maybe I was asking the question the wrong way. I was confused by what you were saying. It sounded like you were saying that Seven-Eleven has only one building plan
No.
that they put on every site. So it seemed like you were implying that the building can't be rotated because there's only one building.
No, that is not what, if I had said that, I apologize, but what I was saying is that the way this architectural plan, and I'm referring to Exhibit A seventeen, the way this architectural plan has been developed is based on what it fronts, whether it be parking or Raritan Avenue.
Right.
And as you know, and as the board knows, it has changed from the first time it's been here as a result of trying to incorporate a number of concerns of the board, quite frankly, adding access and adding the ability to have a door on Raritan Avenue. Things were shifted, moved, et cetera. As I also mentioned to the board, I've worked on somewhere between thirty and forty Seven-Eleven projects in the tri-state area. I've never seen a building of this shape. I've never seen a Seven-Eleven with two stories. seen a building of this shape. I've never seen a Seven-Eleven with two stories. Quite frankly, I've never seen this aesthetic on a Seven-Eleven with regard to what it looks-
So, they can design it to any site, really?
No, well, they can design it if it's, if it's viable. I mean, that's, that's the, the balancing-
So, I, I guess what I'm asking is, your testimony is that the building as it was designed, that architecturally designed, cannot just be relocated to the place that it was identified in the schematic plan, but it could be redesigned to fit?
No.
Really? You're able to say that?
As part of the conceptual plans, again, I've been here for both hearings, I've listened, I've looked at the plans. We've sat with the architect to prepare these plans for Seven-Eleven. We've sat with Seven-Eleven. This plan is about the tightest footprint you can get with regards to laying out coolers. All of the features that you have fronting on Raritan Avenue, I think it would be, again, as I said, I think it would be irresponsible to say that we could simply flip the building, put the cooler on Raritan Avenue, move it to the back, and, and that we would have a, a design. And that's what's been, that's what's been done here. We've been, we've been shown a plan that said it was the same building, when it's, by what I was talking about with the site design and engineering, you can't simply rotate something ninety degrees and achieve the same functionality.
So, I, I, maybe we're saying the same thing. I'm just trying to kind of get clarity on it. I don't believe that the intent was that it be the same building. It has the same square footage. I think that that was the intent, and that, that as you said, Seven-Eleven can do a lot of different designs to fit various sites.
It has, here.
Right, and, and they have. And I know that they've worked very hard at doing it. But that schematic that was brought to you didn't say, we're gonna put the coolers on Raritan Avenue. It said, we're gonna fit the square footage in this location, and the building, the interior of the building would then be redesigned to fit that. And you're not, you, you can't necessarily say that that is not possible.
Well-
Right.
Again, with all due respect to the designers of the concept plan, who on the record said it was a concept plan, there were no details provided with regard to relaying out the interior of the store. There were no suggestions with regard to engineering the site. We received a concept plan, which we reviewed now from an engineering perspective to determine whether or not it was functional. We also reviewed it from an architectural perspective to determine if it was functional. So, I feel we've gone above and beyond with regard to looking at this potential plan to see whether-
Okay, so that's what I'm asking. You did look at it architecturally, that layout, and, and came up with the fact, your architect looked at that layout, that configuration, and determined that a store could not be put there?
This plan was submitted to the entire project team, and in the same way we came back to the board and added the door on Raritan Avenue and reviewed it, we reviewed this plan to see whether or not it would be feasible to locate the building and rotate the building as such. And what we determined, all of the project's team input, a design surette, if you will, is that no, it would not, it would not function properly for Seven-Eleven.
And Chuck, can I, I said, even if, if it did function properly for Seven-Eleven, if somehow you could make it work, would you still design the site with only one access on South Second?
No.
You'd still want, you would still need for safety and site, well, the access on Raritan?
No, I believe there were five or six points that I mentioned that haven't been fully vetted that I have concerns with. One of them had to do with the fact that this is, in my opinion, it is the same square footage, it's not the same building.
But when, I'm sorry, just to follow up. But when you sat down and, with your design team, were you, were you, with the number of parking spaces dictated? So, it's gotta fit this number of parking spaces. So, I guess-
Within the, within the site?
Yeah.
Well, actually, we came to the board with more parking spaces. We came to the board with more product inside, and we've continued to refine. In fact, the last time I spoke before the board, we were willing to eliminate one sto, one stall towards the back of the site. So, there has been much flexibility in the design of this site, interior and exterior. But we're at a juncture now where we've reviewed, we've reviewed a number of alternate plans as part of the design process, our own internal, and now we've reviewed a schematic plan that has been provided by an objector from an engineering perspective to try to understand if it could function. And in my opinion, for all the reasons that I've stated, I don't believe it will be effective, and I don't believe it would operate safely.
Right, so what you're, I'm gonna finish up. So, what you're saying is, and maybe I need to hear from the applicant, the actual applicant itself, is that you can't build a, let's say, a larger building with less parking and with only an entrance in and out on South Second?
What I'm stating to the board is that based on my review of the schematic plan, that this would not be an effective access management plan. It does not meet the parking standards of the borough, in my opinion, as well as the other items that I've stated. I, I think it's important that I stated on the record that simply rotating the building doesn't mean that it's the same building and can function-
I, I'm not saying rotating the building. I'm saying is, um, I would think, and, and you, you're more the expert than I am, that if we had less parking spaces in the site, that there may not be a need for both curb cuts, both on Raritan and on South Second.
It doesn't change-
Anyone agree to that?
The, removing one or two parking stalls on this site the way it's designed today, in my opinion, doesn't change the accessibility of the site, the access management plan of the site.
Okay.
So, regardless of the design, without an entrance and exit off of Raritan Avenue, you're saying you can't get that site plan to fly?
I believe that that is a critical, essential element of the plan, yes.
So, you gave testimony that, um, I think you referenced the right aid side, um, site, that even though that's accessed only from Second Avenue, that it works because there's a one-way in and a one-way out, and it's more of a box. So, um, you're saying that you couldn't have separated those two, in other words, you, one of the variances that you're seeking is that your parking essentially, you know, fronting Raritan Avenue. I mean, you have some, you have proper tree screening, but-
Right.
You're coming right up to that sidewalk anyway, although there's a screening. So, are you also testifying that you could not provide a, a screening between the sidewalk and the parking lot and have that type of view where you have a lane in to circulate and then a lane back out?
Well, I use the right aid as an example because it's, it's a much larger lot than this, of course, but it squares off.
We're talking about a design concept of, you know, coming in and forming a circulation where you don't have to double back, let's say.
The Chair's talking about a, a one-way flow.
A one-way flow about-
What, uh, run in and-
Off of Second, so you pull onto Second Avenue, you make a right into the lot, and that there's a type of, and, and that right in would happen closer to Raritan Avenue, and then there would be some sort of flow, and then you have a separate lane coming back out where your, where that top lane is on your drawing. So, essentially moving, let's say, your bottom lane down towards the front of the site. I'm just saying, there are actually a lot of ways to, I mean-
No, well, I, I disagree with you.
There are a lot of ways to design things, and it's a little frustrating to hear you say over and over that this is really the only way. It would be a little, like, it would be easier to appreciate why this is the answer, other than that it's the only answer.
Well, Madam Chair, I have sat with this plan on my desk in a red marker for the better part of the year. I have put the building in the middle, put a one-way pattern around the building, tried to get out in a similar U-shape. I've tried to figure out a way to get behind the building and get to South Second Avenue, keep the number of parking stalls, keep them close to the building. I'm not here to say that there's not another way to design a building or a shape on this property. What I've spent the last year looking at is whether or not this use and this development could function properly and effectively with another circulation pattern. And I, with all due respect, I don't think that there is one. And we've heard many comments from this board. We have never discarded them. We have spent a significant amount of time with your architectural team, with the Seven-Eleven team, to understand if we could do something different. This has been a design process that has changed as we've gone. We've added a door to, to Raritan. We've removed parking stalls. There's been a significant amount of time spent to redesign it. So, with all due respect-
I'm sorry.
We've tried to design it different ways and-
Right, but I, and I believe everything you have said. The only point that I'm gonna raise is, you said just before, and keep the number of parking spots. I know I keep harping on this issue, but if that's the case, i- is that the case, that you're trying to make it work with the same number of parking spaces?
No.
Okay, so, so you've tried even with less parking spaces and it's, and it still doesn't work?
We have stated in the-
I know, I know, we're taking off the ones in the back.
We're willing to remove one parking stall. Yes.
That's one.
It's, it's a design change. We've, we've heard the comments, and so what we're trying to do is come back to the board with a change that improves maneuverability in that portion of, of the site. I think it's a significant change and, and concession to compromise and try to go through the design process with this board.
I may disagree with you on that, that one out of one spot is a, is a major concession. But I'm just saying is that if, if the issue was only number of parking spaces, we wouldn't be here anymore. We would have granted you a variance a long time ago, and you, we all would have been on to other things at this point, in terms of whether you, you had design, were able to design a, you know, a site with a lot less parking and then without the curb cut on Raritan Avenue. But as you've said, your testimony is, it doesn't work.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, um, Mr. Baker, the time's now ten thirty. Um, so-
I thank you for letting us go, and I should have that. And when is the next meeting?
So, our next meeting is February, is it, the twenty-first?
We need to, um, well, we do need you to sign a-
No, but they can't with the contract, I mean, since it's been a year.
I assume that there and we are concluding that?
So, so we will carry this matter to, do you wanna say you're carrying this?
Yes, we'll carry the matter without further notice until February the twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, seven-thirty. No further notice will be provided.
Madam Chair, uh, just as a matter of housekeeping, I know this, we're not making edits, but for purposes of a possible-
But the, you're talking about, the windows would-
Oh, sure.
Have to change.
Uh, I think that would be up to, allow me, um, I think-
Twenty-two, oh.
Oh, nine. For the record, it would be oh-nine. And, and the this is, uh, the this is the Benino, Mr. Listen, the this is the Benino report of January sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Give it to Diane. Okay, I need to-
So, ladies and gentlemen-
I'm gonna ask everyone to please-
Mr. Liston?
Thank you.
There you go. Yeah, you, you hold on, 'cause not part of the record, I have a, I have my own time.
Okay, and we're still in session, so if you stay, you need to be quiet so we can stay in session, or you can leave quietly.
Or you can leave.
Okay, if it's, is there any, there's no further business at this time, so I will accept the motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Alan, do I have a second?
Second.
Paul? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Thank you.